I would like to call this meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council to order. Would you, would the, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Circe?
Here.
Councilmember Fulcher?
Here.
Councilmember Dibala?
Present.
Councilmember Gibson?
Here.
Councilmember Siemens?
Present.
Councilmember Hansak?
Present.
Councilmember Small?
Well, I would just first like to say Happy New Year. This is our, I think technically, our first Wednesday meeting of the year. So, hope that everyone had a fantastic holiday break. And definitely, my colleagues and I have been together quite a few times in the new year. But definitely hope that everyone, all of our residents are starting out the new year in a positive light and wishing everyone a happy 2023. So, I am going to first go through a couple of changes to the agenda and just make sure that we read out the agenda for the next few days. So, tonight, we will cover or continue our conversations that started on Monday, orienting the council on city departments' roles and responsibilities. Tonight, we will cover recreation, housing and community development, public works, and the police department. On Friday, the 13th, the council will have an administrative function session to discuss direct report staff and discussions regarding implementation of council rules and procedures. That meeting will be at 6:30 and is a continuation of our January 5th session. On Monday, January the 16th, that is a holiday, Martin Luther King Day. The offices and facilities are closed on Sunday and Monday for the holiday. And definitely want to encourage residents in the community to treat Monday as a day of service and to serve the community in any way that you can. On Wednesday, January the 8th, on January the 18th, the council will have its regular meeting. At 7:30, we will receive a legislative update as well as a presentation on fiscal health of the city. On Monday, January the 23rd, the council will have a closed session that will be at 6:30. And that closed session, we will receive legal advice regarding Tacoma Junction and also matters related to collective bargaining negotiations. And then Wednesday, January the 25th, the council will have its regular meeting on Wednesday. And during that meeting, we'll have proclamations recognizing the closing of Tacoma Park businesses, a presentation on the minor master plan, the project background and progress to date, as well as work sessions on the strategic plan updates of our Housing Economic Development Strategic Plan, Sustainability and Climate Action Framework, as well as the status of the Public Space Management Plan Development. We'll also receive an overview of boards and committees, including recruitment, appointments, and council process and application review. And that will take us to the end of the month, January the 30th, where the council will have a special meeting that will start at 6:30, that's a Monday, and that's where we will have our retreat to discuss council priorities as well as city council legislative priorities.
Do we have to have a vote to approve your changes to the, to the agenda? For the second, or, I'm not trying to be funny, I'm just wondering if we needed to have a vote to approve the changes that have been made to the agenda. Technically, they're not quite the same things, I'm just asking.
No, we normally, we normally don't. And do we have any matters for the record, or no? Great. So, also want to see if we had any public comments. I'm looking to the city clerk to see whether or not there were any that came in virtually or, awesome. I don't see many residents in the room, oh, awesome. Do we have any residents that would like to provide any public comments? Please come to the podium.
A Happy New Year. My name is Bedell. I'm a longtime resident of Tacoma Park, elected in '74, nineteen Aspen Court. I have some issue with my property manager. They deny, they don't seem to be following the guideline of the housing. They, they come to your resident, your home, without giving you any prior notice. You come in bashing and do what they want to do, and when you ask them what it needed, they won't tell you. And when you call, the property manager, to find what's going on, she doesn't answer my calls. And she, 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 she tried to avoid me, she, she tried to retaliate against me because she and I went to court before, I had issue with her, I took her to court, so she trying to pay back. And, and they, they, we noticed that our laundry machine, we, 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 the tenants, residents of Tacoma Park, we, we are charged more to do laundry and to drive a car versus people in Civil Spring, the same company, same laundry machine company, and she manages both, she manages both Civil Spring, resident, and Tacoma Park. But she, they charged us more than they charged Civil Spring. And when I complain, and another thing, when you call the housing people here to get, to get somebody to listen, to listen to you, nobody picks up the phone. You call housing, you call different department. Today, I called the city manager, nobody answered, leave message. You call, 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 you can't get anybody to respond to you, very frustrating. And, and this past Monday, they came to my unit after we had a county inspection last Wednesday, and I told them what I had, my problems that need to be fixed, we wish on my stove, the oven. And this past Monday, they came to my unit, they didn't even tell me anything. I was, I was home, I was at work. When I got back in, my kitchen was all disorganized. The way I fix it, it not how, they not how they left it. They moved things around to get to where they wanted to get to. And a year or so ago, they did the same thing. I saw from asthma, I got severe asthma, they came to my unit again, they didn't tell me anything, I told them, don't, don't, don't spray my apartment for any pest control. I got severe asthma. And they still, they came, they came anywhere and sprayed, and they, they odor the smell of their chemical, having, having, letting me to go to emergency room. And to this day, they have not paid the emergency room bill, the ambulance bill, and I missed it from work. They haven't, they haven't paid my call, rent to office, the phone was gone, they don't even want to answer my question. So, I'm, I'm being treated, I'm being harassed, I feel I'm being harassed by them. And when I call the staff, in fact, they got a new thing, when I pay my rent, they don't want to give me receipt. They don't give me receipt, they said they're not allowed to get receipt. I said, why, why is that? I pay my rent through cash, cash check, Navy Federal Credit Union. When I pay my rent on time, I know I've been paying my rent, my rent pays on time. When I pay my rent, I said, can I get my receipt? They said, no. I said, why? They don't give me, I have to argue, I can finally, they will, they will make a copy and stamp it and say this is your receipt. I mean, it just been problem with the rent to office all the time. And I discussed that with my council lady, Cindy, and she tried to help me regarding the pest control thing, because I was sick from that, from that smell. I was in, I was in emergency room overnight stay, as a result, I could not go, go, go to work the next day. I missed work. They have not compensated me for my, for my time I lost from work.
Sir, I'm so sorry, but your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
Okay.
Councilmember Dibala, do you have his contact information?
I, I have your cell phone number, which is the best way to contact you. So, may I say a word?
Sure.
I would appreciate some time with the housing folks to, to talk about this, this, building, this property manager. Bedell is not the only person, and this is not the only time that there have been issues with this particular property manager and this particular property. And I think we really need to take a look at this and, and see what we can do.
Okay.
But yes, not every resident, we all know this, but point in case, not every resident has email, not every resident has answering services, all of that stuff. Sometimes you really just have to call them on their cellphone when they're not at work. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. And I just want to confirm, I believe I did see some, some names on the Zoom, but are, do we not have any virtual public comments?
No one signed up for public comments.
Okay, perfect. Are there any other comments in the room? Okay, great. All right, so now we're going to move to council comments. Do any of my colleagues on council have any comments that they would like to share? Councilmember Small?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I just wanted to say a couple of things specific to the Ward and then a couple of general things. I, I just wanted to say my apologies for not attending the New Hampshire Gardens Community Association meeting for elections that was to be held on Monday. We were here in service to the town and trying to get up to speed on the variety of issues that face our directors and D-line staff. I don't think they get to be called the Sweet Staff, but it's not here nor there. Also, I wanted to say congratulations to the Hillwood Manor residents for the completion of their playground. And in particular, I wanted to give a shout out to both the mayor and to Darrell Braithwaite for their diligence in this regard, more specifically for me getting the benefit of something that I can't take credit for. So, I wanted to make sure I made a public comment, that I didn't have anything to do with making sure that the bucket swing was finally replaced in the swing set so that it could be amenable to the many new toddlers in the area. So, thank you, Darrell, and thank you, Mayor, because I was about to get my hackles all up and don't have to. The third thing is, I wanted to make sure that I expressly stated that tomorrow is the Ward Six Community Meeting at the Recreation Center concerning crime and public safety. It is a public safety meeting on purpose because the larger purpose is to understand the environment that we live in and whatnot. I'll have larger and longer words tomorrow about my thoughts on this subject, but I did want to make sure that I expressly shouted out Chief Duval, who has made himself available at any given time to discuss any of the issues that come across, and including any of the variety of public statements from the Public Information Officer about what's going on in the town. So, if you are a person who is in the weeds watching this, I would tell you that you should follow the police department, because they do do a good job of getting that information out. And I think finally, I wanted to say something about the need for and continued efforts of the community associations, both the New Hampshire Gardens Community Association, Hillwood Manor, and/or any associated group in the city of Tacoma Park. And the reason for that is that you were directly related to the actual residents that are associated with your neighborhood. And your weight carries if someone were to say, well, the residents in New Hampshire Gardens, the residents in Hillwood Manor are utterly disgusted with State Highway and their lack of respect for both New Hampshire Avenue and University Avenue. And it'll mean more than when I just completely lose my top at them, and I won't look like such a crazy person. And so, I'm just encouraging everyone to remember that you cannot leave any of these things up to people who claim to be professionals or people who are elected to serve your interests. What you need to do is remain organized. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Small. Just as a reminder for members of council, the prior council instilled a three-minute rule on council comments. You can see the timer on the computer screens. Councilmember Dibala?
Yes, thank you. Happy New Year, everybody. It's good to be back and to be with my new, new and old colleagues. I'm very excited about this coming year. Couple things, speaking of, of crime meeting, there have been a lot of shed burglaries in Wards Two and Six, and anybody in Ward Two who's interested in talking about that tomorrow night is welcome at the Ward Six Community Meeting at 7:30? At 7:30 here? Rec Center, I knew that, I was testing. At the Rec Center, and there's also a Zoom registration that you can, Zoom link you can register for. We have stop sign, we have a four-way stop coming up Saturday at East West Highway, Ethan Allen, some people call it East West Highway, and Allen, which has been a long time coming, and I'm very excited, and thank you, city staff, for pursuing this, and thank you to the residents who've been so persistent. And I'm going to be excited on Saturday to see that stop sign finally in action, and hopefully it'll have the result of less, less accidents. And a safer intersection. Speed bumps on Auburn and Prince George's are still on the list, and we're still hoping they'll be soon, the weather, if the weather holds. Okay. And speaking of Martin Luther King Day, so there's, there's two service opportunities that are cosponsored by the city, I believe. One is at Tacoma Woods on Monday from 10:00 to 12:00, it's cleanup. One is at Dorothy's Woods from noon to 2:00, it's invasive, invasive management and cleanup. And there is, instead of a food drive this year, there's a personal items drive through Tommy's pantry, because that seems to be the biggest need for the local groups around here right now, right at this moment. So, there's boxes in different places and at a couple of the elementary schools. Let's see. And, yeah, that's it for me, thank you.
Councilmember Hansak?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add a few announcements and thank yous. One, one is a thank you for today's events to the city staff as well as the Adventist group. They really worked hard to make sure that residents across the city and inclusive of Ward Five, who have really had a lot of concerns and, and wonderings about what's going to happen at the Adventist Health Center. And I am delighted to say that there was a grand opening. It's been open since September, but it's a primary healthcare services, and I encourage people to reach out and learn more about it. It's in Suite 401, is that right? I don't have that off the top of my head. Can somebody nod their head? Yes, 410? Okay, 410, pardon me. And, and it's in the Annex Building on the Adventist Health Campus. So, really beautiful suite, we were all really impressed, the doctor was fantastic, and they said to us that the clinic should be there in perpetuity, so I just want to call that out. I was delighted to hear that. And, and also, I wanted to say a big thank you to Chief Duval, who, again, I didn't put the wheels in motion initially, it was Jarrett Smith who spoke on behalf of Essex House and asked if some residents on Maple Avenue, including Essex House, could have a community meeting with the police department. And I'm delighted to say that Chief Duval has agreed to bring some of the police force over to talk to residents at Essex House about a number of just community policing issues. So, thank you very much to the chief for doing that. And then finally, in, in addition to the two city organized health, excuse me, MLK Day service opportunities, there's also one that's going to be taking place in our ward. It's not sponsored by the city, it's sponsored by the Adventist Group, and they're going to be meeting at, let me give you the address, at 501 Sligo Avenue, and they will be working on Piney Branch, Carroll and Houston Court areas to do some cleanup. So, you bring gloves to that one too, and there'll be cider and snacks afterwards over at 501, from 11:00 to 2:00. Thanks.
Great. Any other council comments? Awesome. Well, one of the joys, I remember Mayor Smith would, Mayor Stewart would always say, one of the joys of going last is that people usually bring up the things that you need to talk about so you don't have to speak as long. I just want to let folks know that I plan to attend the Ward Six Public Safety Meeting, and definitely want to encourage residents outside of Ward Six who have questions or concerns around matters of public safety to please join us at the Rec Center on Thursday. I also want to thank the Adventist Healthcare for the grand opening that happened today. Just as a little bit of history, when our urgent care closed due to difficulties with recruitment and numbers, we particularly Mayor, former Mayor Stewart, former council member Kovar, and council member Dibala worked along with city staff, city manager Fox, to come up with an approach to meet a really important need in our community, and that's primary care, but additionally behavioral healthcare in our city. And so, in addition to providing that primary care office, there's a telehealth suite related to behavioral healthcare. It is a model for primary care and behavioral health integration, and also will bring a number of different behavioral health groups and resources to our community that will be very valuable for us. And so, I just want to again thank Adventist Healthcare for the work that they did in working with us, and I definitely look forward to our continued partnership as we work together to advance the, the hospital site. I will be on Monday between, like trying to make some of the rounds to the various events that are happening in the city. There is also a roundtable that is hosted by Manifood Center. It's a roundtable on ending childhood hunger, so I will be attending that event as well. There's a number of county council members that will be attending, including Council Member Abenaz, so I will be attending that on Monday as well. And I think those are all of the comments that I have. Thank you so much. So... City, I'm going to turn things over to the city manager for any comments that, that he may have.
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. As I say, as I stated on Monday, Happy New Year, welcome back to members of the community and staff. We're looking for a strong and prosperous year this year. The only other item that I just raised is today, the state legislature is back in session. They were sworn in around noon, so it's a 90-day session as always on annual basis, and so there's some bills that were slated today. You'll have an update from ANCOT next week at the top of the hour of your next week's session. That's all this evening.
Great, thank you. And so, we have minutes to adopt. Just want to confirm, awesome. So, members of council should have received and did receive copies of the minutes, and so I'm just going to ask for a motion to move forward with adoption of the minutes.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I just had one quibble with the minutes from the 30th. I'll forward you the information, but I would like the poem to be in on the record that celebrates the mayor being the first black mayor, since I did read it out loud, so I'm going to send it to you. That's the only change I had.
We can attach the poem. So, would we still need to go ahead and move forward with adoption of the minutes, and then we can make the modification? Okay. So, I would like to make the motion. Awesome, thank you so much. Thank you very much, all those in favor of adopting the minutes?
Aye.
All right. Thank you so much. I'm sorry, I should have said, any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay. I think we have universal adoption of the minutes with the amendment that Councilmember Small has requested. All right, great. So, now I'm going to turn the meeting over to our city manager, who will begin the council orientation presentations.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and this evening is my honor to turn it over to my colleague, the acting deputy city manager, Clark.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council, as my colleagues approach the desk and take their seats. This is a continuation of the council orientation. And first up, we'll hear from four departments tonight, and first up will be Recreation and Acting Director Huffman.
Thank you, Greg. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am honored to be here with you tonight. This is my first presentation, so please bear with me. I will go to the next slide. We will be talking about Recreation, Housing and Community Development, Public Works, and Police. We went over the organizational chart on Monday, and so here's Recreation. So, our staffing is 10 FT, 10 and a half FTEs for full-time staff. We have four listed in administration, which would be the director, the deputy director, and two administrative support staff. Then we have one person who focuses on athletic fields and facilities, which encompasses a whole lot. a whole lot more than that. The Community Center and Special Events, Camps and Childcare, Teens and Outreach, Tacoma Park Recreation Center, seniors. And then we have a part-time career position, which is a recreation specialist that is currently vacant. The department has 10.2 part-time staff, 10.2 part-time FTEs, split amongst front desk staff at both buildings, sports staff, special events, the teen lounge, camps, and childcare. So with that, both buildings are open until at least 9:00 during the week and weekend hours. We have five gymnasiums right now with basketball practice and a teen lounge that's open throughout the week, so we always have a lot of different things going on. Next is our meat and potatoes. So these are our projects and programs. So it took me a good bit to get everything that we do condensed into one slide, and I could talk about this all night. So a lot of the things that we do are for youth, and then we have another focus on adults and seniors. So we have a large summer camp program. We have two childcare programs, which run in tandem with Montgomery County Public Schools, before care and after care. We have ongoing seasonal recreation classes for all ages. Looks like we're missing on the slide adults in the 55-plus community, so tots to 55-plus. We have drop-in youth and teen programming that happen at both buildings right after school, so if you're here around 4:00, we get an onslaught, come down from the hill that come to the teen lounge, the game room, just come and hang out. We also have a summer youth employment program, and we have a variety of volunteer opportunities for teens as well throughout the year. We also focus on field maintenance, which is at Ed Wilhelm and Lee Jordan. We have memberships for the gymnasium and the fitness room, both at the Recreation Center on New Hampshire Avenue. We coordinate the rentals of the pavilions or shelters in the parks and the multipurpose rooms at both facilities. And we also have Hefner Park Community Center. We have a few major special events that we do throughout the year, and most of you are familiar with our Monster Bash that we just had in October, where we start at the middle school, we parade down to here or in front of the community center. We have over 1,000 people every year. We've had extravaganza events or egg hunts. We hope to go back to a traditional egg hunt this year. So in years, in the more recent years, we've kind of done things throughout the community to break it up because of COVID, and we didn't want 500 kids trampling over everyone for the same amount of eggs and getting too close. We have two outdoor movies, one to start the summer and one to end the summer, and we have a fitness expo at the Recreation Center. We have a host of leagues for youth and adults. We have a winter basketball program, like I mentioned that earlier. We have 550 kids in our Winter Basketball League program this year, which is up from last year, but not what it was pre-COVID, so we're working on that. But 550 kids is still great to engage them in weekly practice and basketball games. We have Futsal League that's also starting in the next couple of weeks. We have T-ball in the spring and summer basketball program. We have Adult Softball League, Volleyball Club, and another adult basketball league for them as well. So just to give you some statistics from the session that just finished, which was Fall 2022, we offered 100 different programs. We had 803 Tacoma Park residents in those programs, 226 non-residents, who pay an increased price, I might add, for a total of 1,029 participants. In comparison to the fall of 2019, which was pre-COVID, you know, we had 130 classes with 871 residents and 190 non-residents, and that was a total of 1,061. So 1,061 pre-COVID, 1,029 post-COVID, so we're almost back to where we were before. We have 168 active memberships at the Recreation Center. Most are youth and teens for the basketball court, which is very busy after school every day, and a lot of 55-plus for the fitness room, which we just recently opened thanks to Public Works. I talked about our Winter Basketball League program, which goes from K through 7th and 8th grade. So we have lots of different health and wellness benefits, obviously, because we are recreation, but we also help in numerous other ways. We provide lots of socialization. Statistically, we're proven to decrease loneliness and isolization, I can't say that word, by participating in recreation programs. We provide many educational opportunities, mental health opportunities as well. So we are all about uniting people together. Monday night, we talked about ARPA projects. We have a few. We have residential scholarships and tutoring combined together, and we have the STEM programs that we offer. The residential scholarships and tutoring is 125,000, and our STEM program is 20,000. You can see by the pie chart that I made, the breakdown in scholarship awardees for this last year. Scholarship awardees are base for a calendar year. So last calendar year, we had a total of 55 scholarships granted, 55 families, which was 180 family members. This year, we are 11 days into the calendar, and I've already approved 15. Most of those 15 are 100%, as were the majority of the awardees for last calendar year. With tutoring, that's also part of our ARPA projects. We have given a contract to Maryland Teachers Tutors, and they're gonna start in February offering two days of tutoring at this building and two days of tutoring at the Recreation Center. They have teachers in all different types of fields, so we're gonna put out some information and ask where the need is, and then they'll send the appropriate tutor. With our STEAM ARPA project, our contract was given to Get Into STEAM LLC, and they provided a STEM project at Hefner on November 8th, which was in honor of National STEAM Day, and they're gonna have a spring workshop and a spring break camp coming up. One of our major initiatives is marketing scholarship opportunities for residents, so we want to make sure that we get the word out. We have translated the application and the instructions into four different languages. We go to back-to-school nights. We work with our lovely Recreation and Community Engagement Committee to help us spread the word. And it's even at the end of all of our emails. So if you've ever gotten an email from anybody in the Rec Department, it mentions the scholarships, has a link directly to the scholarship page, and has all four languages on the website. So we are heavily involved with the Community Partnership Program with Summer Meals and Enrichment Program, which is Lunch and Learn. They've received the grant for the last few years. And the Community Recreation Activities and Programs, which was given to Let's Play America. So we help support those two amazing programs. We've been involved in the redevelopment opportunity at the Recreation Center. We are ecstatic to see the end result when that comes around. We provided the approximate square footage for the recreation space. We attended the site visit in November to provide prospective bidders with answers to any questions. So we know that the building, we have outgrown the building, and we are very excited to see what this opportunity has for us. And we have been involved in the Library and Community Center renovation project. We've moved all of our 55-plus classes to the Rec Center because of the limited parking that we anticipate happening very soon. We hope that the limited parking won't impact the evening classes as much, because we'll be able to use the elementary school next door, but we can't use it during the day because the teachers are there. We have closed down the multimedia lab and the senior room. We have limited our rentals because of the parking as well. And then at some point in about a year, we will lose four rooms temporarily, and we'll potentially move over to the temporary library location, because the back Rec office will be renovated as well, which has not happened since the building was built. So that is my piece. I could talk all night about recreation, but I didn't want to steal everybody's time, so I will open the floor for any questions, I guess.
Great. Councilmember Small.
Hello, and thank you for coming. I'll say the same thing that I've said to everybody else. Working in Minnesota, it's hard, appreciate what you're doing. Never let me say that that is not the case. So if I ask you pointed questions, I apologize. If they are inadvertently pointed, I won't know. I think the first one is when, if you could go back a slide.
Oh, do you wanna go back to?
No, this is fine. We'll start here, and then we'll go back again.
Okay, sorry. Okay.
So when we are looking at this special initiative program, just for point of clarification, when you're talking about scholarship opportunities, that means that you are making available the opportunity to take part in any recreation program regardless of, or on a need-based basis?
Right.
Okay.
So, sorry, just to elaborate on that, there are different levels. We follow the HUD guidelines, so there are different levels. There's a 20%, 50%, 70%, and then we have recently offered 100% during COVID, and we've kept that going.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that that came out clearly, because I think if you look at the pie chart that you're talking about, Councilmember Hansak and I were just looking at it, and you'll notice that, you know, it's dominated primarily by a couple of wards or primarily by three wards. And so looking at it in those kinds of terms, I just would say that knowing that some of that is related directly to the Recreation Center and the ability to have something to do in the evening or after school, that I would hope that we would be able to find some sort of amenable options as the RFP comes to fruition and we start talking about closing spaces and we start talking about needing air conditioning and HVACs and things like that, I would impress upon everyone, at least up here, to understand the importance of those kinds of things to the area in particular.
Absolutely.
And so I guess, without being too platitudinous on this one, can we go back one more slide also? So the thing that I was noticing on here is when we were talking about the variety of things that we are responsible for, can you guys talk a little bit, and Greg, I know that this may be you, too, you may have some purview on this. The field maintenance at Wilhelm and Lee Jordan, given the fact that those are school parcels and also controlled by park and planning technically, what sort of memorandum of understanding or overall relationship do we have with those places as public or quasi-public spaces?
Please interject and correct me if I'm wrong. So the Ed Wilhelm Field, which is on Tacoma, local Piney Branch Park, is the property of Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission. We have an MOU into perpetuity that we maintain the field. So we don't maintain the playgrounds, the basketball courts, yada, yada, just the field. So we do that through a contract.
Okay.
And the Lee Jordan Field is the property of the Board of Ed, and we have the interior scope of that, so we have the field, so not the exterior outside of the walking path, et cetera. So, and we have an MOU with that as well. So both of those are handled through the same contract.
Excuse me, and just to add to that, not only do we maintain the field, but we actually have a reservation rights for the field, so we're the only entity that reserves the field.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's helpful to know, I think. The other thing that I was going to mention is related to programming and the effectiveness of your program. I noticed that you basically said that you were operating at pre-pandemic levels, for lack of a better term.
Very close.
And I would imagine that if that's the case, given the circumstances that we currently have with regard to the building and other things, it would be reasonable to assume that this is something that can be planned for and budgeted with regard to costs and other things and revenue generation from these programs. So also, the, one of the things that I think is really neat about living here is that we do have our own recreation department. When we start talking about the multiplication of services or whatever else, it's one of those things that comes up. The reality is that somewhere between socializing people's children and paying exorbitant amounts of money so that your child can hoop or play soccer or whatever else is a great public good. And I would just encourage you guys, as I stop this little soliloquy, to continue to consider places where programming can occur, where people can be organized and express and move their bodies cognitively or whatever else, chess, any number of things. But it's, there are some placemaking aspects to this that I hope that we continue to consider as a town, because there just aren't places for kids to do these kinds of things. And in particular, if you've never considered the reality of what Sligo Creek is like to children or people who are not mobile, or even to yourselves, then you may not have noticed that that is a hard boundary for the way kids or people conceive of town resources, and they shouldn't be forgotten.
Absolutely. Thank you for that.
Councilmember Dabala?
Yeah, thank you. Well, I've been following the recreation programs for a while now and participating in them.
Yes, ma'am.
And I appreciate deeply what you and all of the others do. I had, following up on the discussion about revenue and fees, I had a question from residents about fees and how they are, whether and how they're different for post-pandemic.
Okay.
There's a sense amongst a couple of people who are seniors who are registering for non-senior classes that prices have gone up quite a bit. These people may not be aware that they're eligible for a scholarship, that'd be one thing.
Right.
But let's just say they're not. So can you comment on fee structures? Have all the fees gone up a lot recently, or have they gone up a little, or some of them backed down where they were before? What's going on with fees?
Okay, thank you for that. All of our classes went up 10% in the fall.
Okay.
So not a lot, but 10%. Without knowing the specifics, and we can discuss a specific class offline, so we don't take up everyone's time, I can look into it. There could be a variety of reasons. All of our classes are led by contractors.
Right.
And they set the price, and then we can, you know, try to finesse that, try to get them to bring it down if it's too exorbitant. We try to stay close to what Montgomery County Rec Park and Planning, what others are offering. But yes, you mentioned scholarships. We do have scholarships for Tacoma Park residents that anybody can apply for, so. So I would like to discuss with you if you have the information at a later point, this specific class.
Yeah, but it is an interesting question, because it used to be that the fees were very much lower than surrounding.
Yeah.
Gregory remembers this, yes.
So a couple of different things could have come into play, obviously.
On parity makes some sense.
Okay, yeah.
It is a bit of a surprise to some residents who didn't do any classes for a couple of years and are now part of the return.
Right, yeah. Without knowing the specifics, I'm wondering, my first reaction would be, I wonder if we have the, if it's a different instructor? Because if I'm teaching, whatever the example is, aerobics, then I can sustain $50 a session, but maybe I've moved on during the pandemic because we did lose instructors and we have new instructors, so there could be potentially someone else teaching aerobics and they have more experience, so their class is more expensive to start off with. So without knowing the specifics, but I'd be glad to research that with you.
Okay, great. And overall, are you satisfied with the way that, with the uptake of the scholarship program?
Oh, gosh, yes.
Do you feel like?
Yeah, so.
Because at one point, it was a handful of people.
At one point, it was a handful.
You know, less than 10.
Yeah, for sure, right?
Yeah.
And we didn't have 100%. So the need is obviously there in the town for 100% if by the fact that we have a majority last year and still this year at 100%. So the need is still there.
And last question on fees and things. And so have you considered whether people who are seniors and who, if they're taking a senior program, get? and who, if they're taking a senior program, get, those are very reasonably priced for all the obvious reasons. Whether they would automatically get a break on the regular programs, or would they go to the scholarship program? Would it be income-based?
Everything that we do for any kind of reduction is based off of the scholarship program. We don't have anything in place where, we encourage seniors to take adult classes. The adult classes are stereotypically a higher level of intensity, right? And they do cost a different amount. So we encourage them to apply for the scholarship program if they meet those needs.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gibson?
Thank you again for your presentation, and I first have to admit my relative ignorance in terms of all that we do, and this is, this is impressive. During the campaign, one of the issues that came up was the duplication or making a comparison between what this, our city provides versus what Montgomery County provides. Councilmember Tabala talked about comparative fee structures. I guess my question is, what do we offer that the county doesn't offer? How, how is it different? How does it, you know, I guess basically, what's our comparative advantage?
Right. Location, right? So the, the next closest facility is Long Branch. After that, I wouldn't be able to say what it would be. So it's definitely convenience for the patrons. It's keeping that connected small-town feel because everybody in the class is from this closer geographical area. You can potentially walk to the class. You know the people that are in the class. So, versus driving to Germantown for a class that, you know, you may not know anybody there. So, but we do offer very similar programs. All Recreation Department offers fitness classes, teen opportunities, summer camps. So those general highlighted, high-level topics are very similar. They offer a basketball league. They offer a footstall league. So it's, it's all about the convenience and the concentration on the residents.
I, I would like to add to that, that Montgomery County Recreation does not offer programs in the city.
I guess that, my, I presume that's because, I mean, why do they not? Because we provide them? And, and so, but that, the question stands. I mean, you know, what, if, if we were not providing programs ourselves, would Montgomery County kind of be, provide them? It may be in, in the city with, with, with properties that exist here. I don't know how Rockville or Gatorsburg, whether they're, have opted out of Montgomery County recreational programs. Again, I'm not against any of what we're doing, but it, but it's one of the issues that's come up partly because of our, our budget issues. We, we look for cost savings. So I, I guess I would be interested in, in a comparison there and with, as well as what the other cities are doing with their programs for further discussion. One other point I want to kind of build off of, Councilmember Small's question about programming, and this is, this is, this is something that, an area that, you mentioned in terms of core functions or core objectives, health and wellness, socializing, socialization, socialization, education and mental health. One of the areas where I know those, those various kinds of things come together isn't, is in the world of conservation and environment.
Absolutely.
And so, I was kind of wondering what kind of cross-functional participation is there with, with Marty Frye and the Arborist, or with our vegetation maintenance supervisor that has maybe some intern opportunities, maybe some training opportunities? There's career tracks related with that? And so, the, the larger question is, how does our current programming take advantage of the opportunities that are offered in our city with, with our ecosystems and with our other programs that, that, you know, in those areas that I mentioned?
So, our spring break camp this past spring was nature and you, or nature and the outdoors. I can't remember the name of it, but we spent a lot of time at Sligo Creek. We had naturalists come in. So we have definitely an opportunity to work more with the Arborist. We used to work a lot with Gina Mathias. And so, we definitely, park, recreation and parks are married together typically. So we are complete cheerleaders and understand sustainability and conservation and the need for more green space and, you know, so we are very big supporters of parks and open space and keeping it for future generations. So we definitely weave in nature whenever that we can. We have different weeks of camp that have different themes, and both facilities have a nature's week. And so, we weave it in all the time. We used to have, go to the community gardens with our aftercare program. So, there's lots of opportunities that we use.
Well, I certainly appreciate those opportunities, and I'm sure that there's more to, to look at. And I do think that cross-departmental fertilization or pollination is, is, is a, is a plus all around without hiring more staff or, or hiring outside contractors. Obviously, it takes a bit more, it does take some effort and time, but there are proper, thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Councilmember Feltzer?
Um, just going back to the, the reservation rates, so that's done through the Tacoma Park website? When they're, when someone's going to get one of the fields, like Ed Wilhelm Field?
I'm sorry.
If I wanted to reserve one of the fields, I would do that through the Tacoma Park website, not through the, the school websites or through the park websites?
So field reservations are handled through the Rec Department. We do not do them online.
Okay.
So we have a historical preference. So a lot of the leagues, first, we put our leagues in, and our needs, and then it goes to local sports leagues that we have a relationship with. So Tacoma Soccer, the softball league, the Firehouse used to have a softball, girls' fire softball. So, so all that goes to historical need and their requests, and then we would take interest with other leagues. But we, in the MOU, it does say that the only thing that we can rent out for are youth leagues.
Okay. And then, is the care for the field subsidized from the county since the schools are using them as well?
No.
Okay. How do you find that the scholarship recipients are finding information about scholarships?
We ask, we ask them occasionally when we can, you know, bring it up in conversation. And a lot of it is word of mouth. A lot of it is, when I was doing the statistics to make the pie chart, I was checking everybody's address and I saw the same apartment communities time and time again. So, it's definitely word of mouth from those people that they are, they know, they appreciate, they respect, that they feel safe with. So, a lot of times, it is a couple of our core parents who continue to say that they sing our praises everywhere that they can. So if a new neighbor moves in, they're telling all about our programs, so.
And do you have a feel for if there's a disparity between the demand for scholarships and the supply of scholarships? And are you guys tracking that in any way? Like, if there's more demand than supply, like what that disparity looks like?
So we don't have a, a specific pot of money, and when that runs out, where it's finished, it's just never-ending. If it's in, if there's, someone applies and they live in the town, if they live within the city ward, city limits, excuse me, and they qualify, then they will get the scholarship. It is written off as a loss of revenue versus saying, oh, sorry, we've reached this magic number and we can no longer give anybody else a scholarship.
So at that point, for, like if I was registering for a class, is it more of like, is it like first come, first served? And whoever needs a scholarship out of the pool that is first come, first served, they get the scholarship?
So, the scholarships are good. I don't know if I'm going to answer your question or not, but I, I hope to. So scholarships are good for the calendar year in which they apply. So everybody's reapplying now. It is not necessarily first come, first served because there is not a specific amount of money set aside for scholarships. Once you get approved for the scholarship, we put it on your active net account, and you can go and register for anything that you want, any classes, camps, membership, and it'll automatically take the appropriate amount off of the scholarship.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
That did.
Okay.
Are, are there any programs that you find that we lack demand for? Like what, what gets canceled? Like I, I have seen things get canceled before. Like what sort of programs are you finding get canceled?
Um, you know, nationally, our hardest audience is teens, so that would be where.
I, I appreciate that as a Girl Scout leader. I totally understand what you're talking about.
We struggle with that, you know, we, we, we need to meet them where they are and figure out how to get to them and figure out how to express the importance of not waiting to the last minute to register. Because then it's just a negative for, like for our winter break camp. We canceled our winter break camp because we had low attendance. The first day of camp, everybody comes in and says they wanted to register, and we're like, what, what happened here? So, yeah.
Okay, and I guess lastly, what do you feel like are the major impediments to recreation, being able to meet demand that you're seeing? Is it mostly facility?
Yeah, we have, we are busting at the seams at both facilities with the construction. That makes us be very creative with what we can offer. We did a lot of virtual opportunities during COVID, and we were able to keep some of those, and we moved some of our classes that were in-person to virtual because of the parking and, and everything that's going to be happening with that. The Recreation Center is just busting at the seams every day, any day. And, and then, you know, it's just staff capacity. As, as we all talked last Monday, we have some vacancies and we have, you know, staff doing a lot of jobs. And, so just that, that opportunity, I mean, all of our staff are, you know, doing so, so much. And John Webster in particular has his plate very overflowing, so.
Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Councilmember Hanzek?
Thank you. I just have a few questions. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Sure.
First, I, you know, I, I feel like I'm going to be a broken record, so I apologize in advance. I keep asking about, we, we are the ward with schools that sit outside of the city, Silver Spring International Middle School and Rolling Terrace. So you had mentioned connecting with the schools, and I'm just kind of curious if you can speak to our, do, do you guys regularly go out to those two schools inclusive when you say we go to back-to-school nights and we try to advertise services? Or do you have some trepidation about doing that because it might confuse people about the availability? For, for example, for scholarships because they're not part of the city? And also, is there transportation from those schools to, for example, after-school programs for those kids?
No, we don't mind to go to those schools. We'll go to any school, and we will go to anybody that offers, or sometimes we invite ourselves. Oftentimes, we invite ourselves. So we definitely have a relationship with Rolling Terrace. We use that for one of our facilities. We have basketball practice going on now, and we'll have games there on Saturdays. So, we will go there to any kind of opportunity that exists, and we can just be clear in explaining that this is not, you know, this is only for Tacoma Park residents. But then we turn it around and say, Montgomery County Rec has a scholarship program. Here's their website. Go there.
So that's a regular part of, of business as usual. Okay, I was just, and do you have transportation?
We do not offer transportation
Okay.
to either one of our facilities.
Okay, thanks. I was just, just curious about that. And then, also, I was wondering if any of your scholarship programs have ever been given for swimming lessons, something that is very particular to my, close to my heart? And I feel like the, the, I know the Piney Branch Pool has been closed for an extended period, and that's, nobody's wanted that. But I am curious if that's something you've been able to do.
Yeah. We do not, because we only use it for our programs. But that could be something that we could easily try to figure out how that would work. But, you know, they're, they are our partner, and we sure do appreciate them, and we're glad they're open as well. So I might defer to Greg on that one.
Yeah, that one may be, excuse me, something that we would have to include in the budget because the way the current recreation scholarships works, as Director Huffman mentioned, is just a loss of revenue. Like we don't have a pot of money set aside to, to put towards a program or to pay for someone to go to something. So once someone applies for that scholarship, it's just a loss of revenue for that particular program.
Have we ever set up swim lessons at the Piney Branch Pool that are supported by the Rec Department? I guess I haven't seen that over the years, but, okay.
So one thing I can, that comes to mind initially is that we have clubs set up in our aftercare program here. So you're registered in our aftercare program, and you could sign up for a writing club, a homework club. We used to go to the library, and one of them was a swimming club. That was obviously pre-COVID. But we would take them over there once a week for swim lessons.
I'd love to explore that further with council members as well as the Rec Department. I think it, it, it could really be excellent for a lot of people who I, I observed in the elementary schools can't swim and even adult programming, and the lessons that are currently offered there are very, very expensive, even prohibitive for my own family. And, and then finally, my last question is just, if you could speak, maybe this is a question for our deputy city managers about funds transferred from the county as two of the councilmembers remember, just what, what do those look like right now? Are we getting any funds transferred from the county level to the city for some of our rec programs? Thanks.
Yes, we are currently receiving, I believe, $88,000 per year.
That's from Montgomery County Rec, right?
Yes, from Montgomery County Recreation for the Recreation Center.
Right.
But we aren't receiving any money for anything else.
May I ask a follow-up question? As part of the recent tax duplication settlement, is there a recreation component to that? Is, that's not coming up in the next year in the formula? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember. No, recreation is not part of the tax duplication. That is something that, from what I understand, and when the group convened last year, something that sometime in the future is something that should be put on the table along with some other programs with other jurisdictions.
That's interesting because Gatorsburg and Rockville do also have their own city recreation programs. So I guess I just assumed it would have ranked a little higher in the list of things that might get, might have gotten covered in that agreement. Okay, good to know. Thank you. Still more work to do.
Councilwoman Small?
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize for speaking twice on this issue, but I wanted to make sure that I said something explicitly given what some of the other conversations in the room was. And that is this, that the realities associated with the development and socialization of the kids who are doing these lives, whether or not it's on a burning or dying planet or otherwise, should take some sort of precedence and priority in the larger scheme of things with regard to the way Tacoma Park does things. In particular, I do find it sort of interesting that we would put the level of emphasis that we have on sustainability and the environment and things like that and not acknowledge the, the resilience necessities that we have and also the reality that unless you are paying attention or have been to wards five or four or six, you do not know what it is like to be landlocked, and you do not know what it is like to live in an urban environment that is concretized everywhere. And so, I would just like to say in advance, before we go any further with regard to this council, that if people are going to say anything about the words that I say on this subject, they're going to have to understand that I would rather us deal with the fact that there are people here living very stressful lives as opposed to whether or not we are doing the right thing by an urban forest, which is an academic designation with regard to where we actually live. So, I just wanted to say that before I got too hot and/or also don't like to be mansplained or white-splained, just so everybody knows.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for all of the work that you all have been doing. I think it's important to note how creative our Rec Department has had to be during the pandemic in particular, to be able to provide services in an environment where our traditional models just were not appropriate. So I'm excited to hear that we're nearing our prior pandemic numbers, which is, it's really exciting to hear.
Thank you.
A couple of the questions that I have, have been, have been answered, but one thing that I do want to make sure that members of council understand is, the Rec Center in particular was owned by the county, operated by the city. And when I stress they did nothing, they did nothing. So, I think that, you know, we, we, we don't want to have revision. So um, I think that, you know, we, we, we don't want to have revisionist history when we're thinking about what the county could potentially do. Um, because the county had that building and the county did very little to nothing to it. Um, I think the uh, the, the biggest thing that is important to me is making sure that at a local level, we have the ability to meet the needs of the people here. And I hear time and time again, we have a, a changing demographic in our community where we have a number of young families that are moving in who have children. Um, and so needs, recreational needs are just growing. Um, so for example, while I was on council, uh, before care at the Rec Center.
Yeah.
Huge, because we had so many um, young families on that side of New Hampshire Avenue who had to go to work, they had to take the bus to get to DC to go to work, but they needed somewhere to, to put their kids. And um, so working with the Rec Department to get that up and running at the Rec Center was, was really important for so many families um, in various parts of, of our community. Um, so I do just want to stress again, um, how appreciative I am for all of the work that you all are doing and uh, definitely uh, want to echo the sentiments of we have a lot more work to do when it comes to tax duplication. Um, because I recognize how um, residents may question now our fee structure because the county is making for their Rec Department or their recreation centers um, free passes for like exercise rooms and the like. So we're going to continue to experience pressures to reduce our fees as they are doing certain things um, for their facilities. And so in order to ensure parity in access, um, there's definitely going to be a need for continued and increased funding um, for municipalities to deal with recreational costs. Um, so I think that that's something really important and just want to highlight that as we were talking about um, priorities, not just as it relates to legislative priorities, but also as it relates to priorities that we may have with um, our chapter, Montgomery County Chapter of MML.
Great, yes.
Can I just, uh, one more thing?
Sure.
I think that, like, I myself as a councilmember and even just the general public might benefit from an example of what it looked like recreation-wise in Tacoma Park before we owned the Rec Center, what the offerings looked like compared to now. Uh, because that would be like real solid stuff that you could look at. Um, and I know that you guys are really busy. Uh, so I don't know, you know, when it looks like that anybody would have time to do that, but I do think that, uh, I think you guys are doing an amazing job and it would just, sometimes people need a comparison to see like what it looked like before so that we can get the history right.
And I think it was more, um, and definitely um, Deputy City Manager Clark, um, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was more about facilities.
Yes.
Facility quality. Um, prior to, we were limited in our ability to make the necessary modifications to the building itself because we didn't own it. Um, so, you know, this creates an opportunity for us to make some of these huge infrastructure changes that are needed um, in the building. Um, whereas when it belonged to the county, we weren't necessarily able to, to do a lot of those things. And um, I see Councilmember Dibala is going to, yeah, go ahead.
If you don't, if you don't mind, um, and certainly Deputy City Manager Clark can comment more on this, but um, if I recall, the programming was, was virtually non-existent and was not relevant to the people who lived the closest to the facility. The, the people who could walk to it or bike to it or get there easily. It just, it just wasn't um, useful to people who lived here.
Yeah, um, Councilmember Dibala is correct. Um, when I first got here, it was sixteen years ago. Um, it, it was, the city had taken over the building, but um, remnants uh, were left. And um, the county, when they owned it, they only had one program um, in the building and that program had been there for, I want to say over forty years.
Forty.
Um, which was a dance program and that the dance program transferred from when Park and Planning owned it to the city. So the contract actually came over to the city and that was the only program that was actually in the building. Um, uh, prior to the city taking over, so.
So we've grown leaps and bounds.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate the history. I mean, you're doomed to, to repeat it if you, you don't recognize history. I also think that, you know, comparison, you know, real-time comparison now is, is even more important. The, the county has stepped up its game uh, over the years and certainly in, in some areas. I don't know if they've stepped up their game in terms of recreation. Uh, I do know that they've, you know, stepped up their game in terms of uh, environmental issues and conservation and we need to compare what they do to what we do. The same thing I think is worth, worth that, that comparison um, to, um, both in terms of fee structure, programming quality, um, all of that is, and, and looking at our sister municipalities, uh, what, what can we learn from, from them as well? So I would encourage that kind of, that, those, those comparisons, um, thank you.
Great, yes, and um, they're doing a lot of upgrades using our money. Using the money of our residents because there is a recreation tax that, that residents are, are charged um, and that money doesn't go to us. Um, so um, thank you so much. This has been really helpful. I don't see any more lights on recreation and we can move to the next department.
Perfect, I will turn it over to our Housing and Community Development Director.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council. Good to see you again. Uh, again, my name is David Eubanks, Director of Housing and Community Development. Today I'm going to be giving you some background on HCD. Uh, so to begin, Housing and Community Development is comprised of five divisions and an administrative office. Uh, the five divisions are Housing, Planning, Economic Development, Code Enforcement, and Arts and Humanities. The Admin Office consists of two and a half FTEs, uh, which includes myself, the Director, and two coordinators. Uh, Housing consists of five, excuse me, four FTEs, um, two of which are vacant. Uh, Planning consists of two and a half FTEs and an intern. And of course, that um, uh, division is currently headed by Acting Planning Manager Alex Friedman, um, who stepped in uh, on behalf of uh, Acting Deputy Director Grigsby. Um, otherwise that particular division would be fully staffed. Uh, Economic Development has a single FTE and an intern position. Uh, the intern position is currently vacant. Uh, Code Enforcement has three FTEs, um, one of which is vacant. And um, the Arts and Humanities uh, Division has a single FTE and a single intern. And the intern, um, after a year of service to the city, uh, has just moved on to bigger and better things. So the total FTE count in HCD is, um, if my math is correct, thirteen and a half FTEs.
Director Eubanks, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but could, did, before we go too far into it, you said thirteen full, for what full census would be or where you are with regard to current staffing? I just.
That would be if every position were full, excluding the interns.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so the core functions of HCD can really be captured by this list of projects and programs. Um, beginning with the Housing Department, uh, Housing is responsible for essentially three things. The preservation of existing housing and maintaining the quality of that housing. Tenant and landlord mediation, education, and organization. Uh, and the administration of homeownership, rental, and social assistance programs. Uh, operationally, um, the primary function of Housing is to oversee our rent stabilization policy, um, which restricts uh, percentage increases in rent to the Consumer Price Index. From this comes two programs, our rental licensing program and our rent reporting program, uh, which together ensure that our rent facilities are regularly inspected and that our rents and fees are in compliance with city laws. Housing also oversees the city's tenant opportunity to purchase law, which allows residents and tenants, excuse me, tenant associations to purchase rental facilities, their rental facilities in the event that those facilities are sold. The city and county in some instances also uh, offer opportunities to purchase these facilities um, if tenants choose not to exercise their first right of refusal. One recent success that uh, many councilmembers may have, be, may be, excuse me, may be familiar with uh, is 112 Lee Avenue. Um, the city was very instrumental in supporting the tenant association, the Leland Tenant Association in the purchase of that property, most notably uh, through the acquisition via state grant of six hundred thousand dollars to support the acquisition of the property as well as uh, capital funds for the renovation of it. In an effort to increase the participation in our tenant opportunity to purchase program, the city has applied for and recently received another half million dollars in state funds to allow the city to provide additional technical assistance as well as, as well as capital assistance um, for any tenant association that would be interested in uh, purchasing the property as well as uh, rehabbing the property once the property is purchased. Our Planning and Development Division uh, is largely focused on multimodal transportation and improved pedestrian safety. Currently, they have several projects um, that they're working on, mostly affiliated with uh, bikeway design, many of which are along New Hampshire Avenue. Uh, a string of projects from University Boulevard to the DC line, as well as the Maple Avenue Complete Streets Project, which we just received another three hundred thousand dollars for, um, to redesign Maple Avenue so that it prioritizes pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit users. Uh, another project, a notable project is the improvement along Metropolitan Branch Trail, which really links via a bikeway DC Tacoma Park and Silver Spring. While the city's zoning authority lies with the county, our Planning Division facilitates and coordinates a lot of the city's land use planning efforts uh, in conjunction with the county planning department. Currently, our Planning Division and the county are working on a minor master plan amendment, which encompasses the Washington and Venice University Hospital as well as portions of Maple Avenue. The county will be presenting to council uh, its process to date uh, on the twenty-fifth of January and then following up at some point later with a series of recommendations. Planning is also working with the consultant CH Planning to finalize the Public Space Management Plan, which is intended to provide an analysis of the city's existing policies related to public spaces, provide recommendations for how to align those policies with best practices as well as uh, help us set priorities for um, the management of those spaces. Moving on to our Economic Development Division, uh, this one-person division is responsible for essentially business development, retention, um, as well as uh, business attraction. They're also responsible for supporting new commercial development and that includes multifamily uh, housing and generally uh, responsible for increasing city tax revenue. The redevelopment of the Rec Center along New Hampshire Avenue falls within the division's purview. In November of twenty-twenty-two, we issued an RFP for the uh, solicitation of a development partner to accompany the city in its redevelopment efforts. Um, this development solicitation included the redevelopment of the Rec Center, but also uh, indicated that the city has a high priority uh, or focus on housing particularly on that site. We uh, are expecting, I believe it's January nineteenth is when those submissions are due. The next step will be for city staff to evaluate the submissions um, and then present any recommendations to council. And then if council approves, to proceed with the remainder of the development process. I won't spend too much time discussing this piece, but um, just recently, council was presented with a, a series of um, what I call support services for my business associations. Um, and I think it was very evident during that presentation how important those business associations are to extending the capacity of our Economic Development Manager. Lastly, the HCD, excuse me, HCD is responsible um, for a large amount of state, county, and regional grants um, in order to fulfill the, the mission of the city as well as the department. Um, these grants, as an example, include state capital strategic economic development grants as well as community development block grants, to name a few. We also administer a number of competitive grant programs to support local organizations as well as grants to support residents in need of emergency assistance um, via our emergency assistance program as well as our rental assistance programs. And we, of course, are helping the library with the redevelopment of the uh, library and um, the community center. These special initiatives um, are primarily focused or have a lens towards FY twenty-four. Uh, in the next fiscal year, the department will intently focus on opportunities to grow and expand the city's economic development efforts with a particular focus on New Hampshire Avenue. This will require the department to take a specific look at a lot of the city policies um, associated with development and housing to ensure that they are in line with the expectations that we have for ourselves in terms of how we want to grow and develop the city over a period of time. We also recognize that such an effort will require a lot of inter-jurisdictional and inter-department um, cooperation, um, particularly as we talk about the portion of New Av, uh, New Hampshire Avenue um, around uh, the Purple Line as well as around uh, Eastern Avenue and then if you move further south around the DC uh, border. Expanding community engagement is also a top priority. An ongoing mission of the department and really the city as a whole has been to conduct outreach and receive feedback from the city's rental population and people of color. The department, over the next fiscal year, will expand its current strategy and its commitment to making a focused effort um, to reaching out and receiving feedback from members of that community. Lastly, there are also a number of internal projects that we intend to pursue in the fiscal year that would allow us to be more responsive and better stewards of the city's resources. These include updating our records and reporting practices, consistently incorporating the use of data in our operations, developing a grant strategy, upgrading our rental licensing software, and again, making recommendations to council or improvements to the code that will better, better enable the, the department and city to reach its housing and economic development goals. And I will uh, pause there and open it up for any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Small.
Um, hello, uh, again, nerd language. This is, I like this stuff, so I have questions for everyone, it's nothing personal. Um, I, the questions I have uh, related to housing and community development are um, a couple. Can we go back a slide if that's possible? So uh, I want to talk about two things. I'd like to talk about the intersection of pedestrian safety and multimodal transportation uh, with uh, public works and/or those kinds of things with regard to your ability to advocate or impress the opinions of the city on state actors. Um, specifically because New Hampshire Avenue and University Avenue are both controlled by State Highway. Um, in addition to Carroll changing to State Highway immediately prior to where Ward Six begins on that far northern side. Those, uh, we are essentially bounded by State Highway-controlled resources. And if you look at what has happened in the area with regard to those resources, you can see that there's been basically apathy on the part of State Highway with regard to those things, particularly with regard to pedestrian safety. Um, I don't mean to make this a pointed question, but it's going to end up one because when we're talking about uh, bikeways and complete streets and the Metro Branch Trail, we're also talking candidly about a relative affluence with regard to the participation in consistently using those kinds of alternative transportation sources, um, primarily bikes or something like that. If um, if you have been in Ward Six, then you know that the topography of the ward is such that it is not flat anywhere. And so we're, we're talking about people who are at least conceiving of using a, a bike. They may be thinking about a motorized bike and so we're talking costs. When you apply that nexus to the relative apathy associated with the previous sector plans that were, that were in uh, for New Hampshire Avenue or the lack of the. or the lack of the interjurisdictional body that would deal with the crossroads or any of these things, I am concerned about the concept of benign gentrification in that we are going to make all these amenities available to people who will be excited to take advantage of them and price out people who have lived there and/or who have not had the opportunity to feel safe while walking the streets of their neighborhoods. I'm sure that some of that has something to do with State, or with, also with Public Works and sidewalks and decisions and how we get made and who's in the CDB block grants or whatever. But I would argue that it is going to fall to you to not be oblivious to the fact that we're talking about trying to reach out to these communities and poor people and things like that, but we're also talking about things that say the quiet part quiet with regard to the coming economic fortunes in that area. So I would charge you to make sure that you are aware of these things. I would assume that you are because you're exceedingly well-prepared. This is the second time we've heard from you as a presenter, and I have been impressed. So I am charging you to go forth and remember those things. The second thing that I'd like to ask about is when you start to think about redevelopment or redevelopment of the recreational apartment site or any of the places where there have been historically efforts at, at taking advantage of density, whether that be apartment housing or it be passive income from a landowner or something like that. There is a reality associated with that, that the footprint of those places is Ward Six, Ward Four, Ward Five. And so when we start talking about these sorts of redevelopments and desiring to do these kinds of things, what we're really talking about is putting more people in places where people are already have a lot of people. And so I'm curious about what your thoughts are about the prospects of developing in some of the other places like the, the parcels that the city controls at Dorothy's Woods that aren't necessarily the wooded part, the pre-existing school that is in that area, and some of the other places where there may be an opportunity to grow the tax base and/or provide some of these additional services that people are clamoring for and perhaps in other wards without putting increased stress on the lack of services in the wards where the actual poor people or diverse people live.
I work backwards. I believe that, and I think we believe as a department, that most of the potential for the city to grow and develop exists along New Hampshire Avenue and Maple Avenue. And my understanding of the city's perspective and past directors of HCD have been that there's, there's been a significant effort in trying to create a vision for those spaces. New Hampshire Avenue has a beautiful charrette. And 2017 report that actually went pretty far. You may already be familiar.
I am.
But the, the state went so far as to do a, a pretty comprehensive economic development analysis. And it looked at and I think prescribed to the city of Tacoma Park the potential of, of, of that corridor. Coming back to one of your earlier points, I think whenever you have that level of potential in any city, particularly in, in a community that has the demographic profile of New Hampshire Avenue, it always brings up concerns of displacement, right? And I have yet to see a city manage the development of such a corridor with that type of demographic profile as well as any one person would imagine or want them to. Often, I think that's because that there's not enough forethought or effort put into the initiation phases of that development process. And the community that exists, the, the cultural components of that community, what that community wants to see as this, as, as, as that area grows and develops are afterthoughts. The, the words are there often, but the effort in designing it such that you maintain and protect that those nuances, it's, it's, it's difficult to grasp, and I, I don't think it's often done well. And so you, you end up with great words and, and great papers and documents and, you know, policies associated with it, but not great implementation. I think what we would want to do different, and I think this is, and I think the council in, in the past, and I, and I know that this council moving forward will continue to put equity at the forefront of everything that we do. And that's something that we as a department have adopted as well. And so as we think about the future of New Hampshire Avenue, we're thinking about how to keep the, the residents in place, keep them involved, maintain the historic perspective and, and aspect of, of what's there now and, and try to, for lack of better words, think outside of the box about what that means and, and, and really solve the problem before we get too far down the line. I think that's the only way to do it, because I, I think that it does have the greatest potential, development potential and, and potential for the, the city to grow its revenue base. And I think the growth of the revenue base is, is highly important, given our fiscal circumstances. And I agree 100% that there is a huge challenge with working, not only with SHA, but with Prince George's County, with DC, all of the players and parties that are going to need to be involved in trying to do it the right way. Right now, it's, New Hampshire Avenue is six lanes. There's no way that you can envision the kind of development that I think we have in mind with a highway that wide. I think what gives me a lot of optimism is the fact that University Boulevard is a large highway too, but as a result of the Purple Line, that highway is shrinking. And so when I think about potential, I think there's a lot of potential and conversation that can be had around the idea of turning the corner and making, you know, Tacoma Langley and Crossroads an extension of the Purple Line. I think we have the right political environment as well as the right focus on parts of New Hampshire Avenue that, that would really make, I think, a long-term vision a potential reality. You also have a lot of energy at the opposite end of New Hampshire Avenue with Eastern Avenue and all of the work that DC wants to do along Eastern Avenue. And so I think because there's enough conversation happening with all of the people who would need to be involved, I think the potential and reality of a real inclusive vision of development along New Hampshire Avenue is probably more realistic than it's ever been. And I think, lastly, the potential to develop other places in the city, I think, is very limited. Mostly by, and I'll ignore the NIMBYism and just focus on-
Don't ignore it.
I, I say ignore because I think it's, we all know it exists. But beyond knowing that the NIMBYism is a component of development in some of those other places, I also think we're just very limited in what could be in those places just because some of those sites are not ideal sites. And when you compare the amount of resources that would have to go into development of a site that's not ideal with the potential and energy associated with New Hampshire Avenue, when you have to prioritize resources in one place or another, it, it seems like that we, and I think I've heard that the priority, for a ton of reasons, equity being one of them, should be New Hampshire Avenue.
Oh, and make no mistake, I, I don't want you to think that I am not in favor of opportunity as a framework or the concept of economic development or any of those things. I just know that one man's economic development is another man's gentrification, and I would prefer that the, you be the man who is determining what is economic development versus gentrification. I appreciate what you said. I believe it was, it was well-heard by me. I hope everybody else heard it well. The only thing I would say about that is to go forth with regard to New Hampshire and University with the understanding that there have been advocates for any number of things, including third spaces and everything along there that got crooked. Our lovely mayor busted her hump when I, the first time that we actually ran against each other, we had a long conversation about the sector plan that was already in existence for New Hampshire Avenue. And so I just want to make sure people understand that that love of ours spied at home when you suddenly come to look at our neighborhood as an economic opportunity when the conditions for living have been less than.
I appreciate the comments, and I, and I look forward to further dialogue and support for whatever the council wants to accomplish as we learn and, and grow together.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I apologize for the length.
No worries. Councilmember Gibson.
Yes, following up as the council member from Ward Three, which is a big part of the New Hampshire corridor there, my campaign and, and interaction with Ward Three residents generally was very positive about economic growth along New Hampshire Avenue. I, the part from Poplar to, to Eastern is in many ways commercial. And, and so I was a little bit unclear in terms of the displacement of residents that you referred to. Could you, could you talk a little bit more about what displacement you're referring to?
I don't think displacement is limited to residents, homeowners, or, or those that rent. Those commercial spaces could easily be displaced as well. And, and so I think the, the reference is more general displacement of all those who currently occupy the space.
Right, right, right. But that's, I guess that is not displacing relatively poor folks necessarily along that, these are business, a lot, a lot of businesses. So just to kind of, that, that's an important clarification. Yeah, I, and, and the residents of Ward Three are very interested in, in this progress on this, and there's, there's certainly support for equity concerns. There's support for, from, you know, my limited conversations with folks to have that quarter connected with the rest of Ward Three, not to be an island to itself. And I think actually the bikeway, the bikeway which I did walk through with one of the, the potential paths is a way to, to do, connect both economic development with intermodal transportation that isn't necessarily favoring one economic group or, or another. One other thing I want to follow up on is in terms of the, I think it's business service contracts. And I was wondering, what is the status of the plans for the Laurel Avenue area of, that's currently served by OTBA? I, I'm a little confused on where that's at. I had a discussion today that raised the issue as if it had potentially been decided to close, but I'd like to know more.
The, the temporary close is obviously still in place, and I, and I think-
Half, half, half of it's closed, you mean?
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay, that, that, yeah.
And, and I think what you're referring to is a, a project that OTBA has adopted with the city's interest and support of the design of the complete closure. We have been monitoring it, but that is something that is solely being led by OTBA. I, I don't have an update at the moment. I'm not sure exactly where they are in the process, but I can, I can certainly find out.
But that decision would be made by this council, I presume? I mean-
Absolutely, yes, yes.
And that decision has not been made yet?
No, no. We haven't had that conversation with council at all.
I think, I mean, my, there's, there's multiple positions on full closure there. Some of them, you know, somewhat vehement against it, but just more citizen engagement there, which I expanded community engagement on that project that certainly would be required before any, any full closure.
And I just want to emphasize that right now, those conversations are happening at OTBA, and, and we haven't, the city hasn't done any design work or had any real, beyond just some input into kind of what we would want in a space like that.
Right.
We haven't adopted anything formally at all.
Very good. I appreciate hearing that as that develops, when OTBA presumably has recommendations or whatever conclusions they come up with. Thank you.
Councilmember DeBala.
Yes, recognizing that we still have a couple of departments to go, I did want to follow up on a couple of the things that were discussed. Thank you for the presentation and for weaving in all the different pieces, because that's, that's so important with these topics. On housing, I, I, I know you, you said this, but it was so long ago, I feel like we should say it again, that one important thing is quality of existing rental housing and making sure that we, that we have people housed throughout the city in quality rental housing. And I think that may have been the first thing you said, but we've been talking so much about everything else. Just wanted to come back to that because that's important to me. I believe that the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan that we adopted does discuss having all different types of housing and economic development throughout the city. So while I hear you, the focus right now because the opportunity is New Hampshire Avenue, there's a, there's an official statement that we're interested in seeing this, not just, not just potentially gentrifying one part of the city, but really seeing these kinds of things spread out. I just want to mention that. And, and I wanted to follow up on the point that Councilmember Small made about interdepartmental work, which I know goes on already, and maybe we don't hear enough about it, particularly on safe streets, complete streets, whatever you want to call it, intermodal transportation as we, as the people who live here, the population, gets more mobile in other ways besides single-family cars, making that accessible and available and working across departments, not just within the HCD departments, but across departments to do that same thing with multifamily housing. We have an, and energy efficiency, great examples of cross-department cooperation there that I would love to see continue. So I just wanted to point those things out and thank you for all the work that your team is doing.
Thank you. We, absolutely right. We, we couldn't do anything without the work of Public Works. You know, we, we can come up with a lot of concepts, and we can think about the things that we would want to do, but the implementers are PW. And so I don't, I don't know if there's a two closer departments in terms of how, the frequency in which we work and the amount of communication that we have to have in order to, to, to help the vision of pedestrian safety and complete streets come alive.
Thank you.
Councilmember Honza.
Thank you. Thank you, David, for that excellent presentation. Just one quick question. I just, you just said that the belief is that most of the potential for the city to grow is on Maple and New Hampshire. Could you just give a few thoughts on Flower Avenue? And I know you included the Minor Master Plan, for example, and we, we are all aware of the discussions around residential buildings going into that area, among other things. Could you just share a few thoughts on that in terms of prioritization and how you see the potential for the city to grow its revenue base along all of Flower Avenue, including that, that piece of land? Thank you.
Absolutely. I, I think the way that we, we are, HCD, we, we have a lot of new brains. Most of the staff have, have, have only been with HCD within the last two years. And so we, together, are trying to figure out the, the best way to- Um, and so we, together, are trying to figure out the, the best way to think about how to prioritize our limited resources um across the city. One of the ways that we have been, um, one of the things we've been exploring is kind of this corridor corridor and and node um concept. And the corridors that we have um contemplated highlighting um at the moment are New Hampshire Avenue, Flower Avenue, um, Maple Avenue, and Laurel slash Carroll. Um, and so those are interesting nodes in the sense that each of those places um have pretty unique needs and are at different um levels of density, um, uh, have their own challenges, have their own demographics. And so um the, the concept isn't fully fleshed out yet, but I think Flower Avenue, as I said, because it's one of those nodes and because it is um has its own kind of unique presence, the, the thing that draws our attention to the two things that, three, things that make that an interesting place to um to kind of dream about are Washington and Venice, um, the Purple Line Stop at the other end, um, and then the 8,000 Flower Avenue uh place node. Um, and so I think there is also an, an incredible amount of potential there as well. It's just different potential. Um, and so I think there, in Washington and Venice, I believe you have a willing and interested partner. Um, they, that group wants to do something with that site. Um, it may be a ways away, but they have concepts and they have ideas. Um, I don't think that you, just again, for comparison's sake, you don't necessarily have the same champion along New Hampshire Avenue. Um, and so, again, just thinking about this, this, the specific resources that need to be designated in any place, for Flower Avenue, I think it's, it's more about convening parties that already have capacity, whereas New Hampshire Avenue, it's more about cre- creating the interest um and creating the vision and um kind of leading the charge there, right? Like you, the, the city has to, to be more of the, the entity that uh, we've got, we've got to be at the front of the line there, whereas I think at, in, 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 on Florida Avenue, we're kind of a part of a, a group. Not a perfect analogy, but, but I think those are the subtle differences, and I think there'll be subtle differences in, in every corridor and node that we look at. I hope that answers your question.
It does, and I'm sure we can have further conversations. I wanted to hear your vision. Thank you.
Councilmember Gibson.
Yeah, I wanted to to follow up on uh growing the revenue base. And correct me if I'm wrong, but this city has, uh, it's been uh described to me as its revenue base is a, a one-legged stool, and that is property taxes. So is there something beyond increasing the value of properties and therefore the, the value of the uh property in increased va- uh property taxes that I'm missing um in terms of rev- uh increased revenue base?
The primary driver would be property taxes.
Is there any, anything else that, that, that will bring in revenue um from uh, you know, our concepts of economic development?
The thing that I'm most familiar with would be property taxes. I think there, there are probably other things that I'm not thinking of.
Right.
Um, that finance might have in mind. Um, but I think in terms of, you know, what's, what's really, what would really be the driver um for the city's revenue, it would be property taxes still.
Right. Well, yes, thank you.
Uh, thank you so much uh for, for your presentation. It's been really helpful. Um, yeah, and you mentioned property taxes. Entertainment tax, man, I am so proud of Chuck E. Cheese. Um, we were.
Hotel.
Hotel tax. Um, there, there are a um additional revenue sources that an increased economic development, particularly along New Hampshire Avenue corridor, could bring to this city. Um, and so I think it's really important for us to, um, when we're thinking about development, not think about it from the perspective of what you may be losing, but what we as a community will be gaining. Um, I do want to talk just really quickly around, you know, the housing approach because um, one of the things that particularly, you know, in Ward Six, where you know with the development of the Purple Line, your border area, you, you, and Prince George's County may have plans for their side of the road. We know that um the District of Columbia definitely has plans for their side of the road, and they're already starting to, to develop. Um, you know, when we are thinking about that vision setting and where we prioritize, and when we're thinking about housing, I do think it's important for, you know, my brain kind of thinks of it in three ways, like increasing access, which means we need more housing, all types, um, making sure that we're able to maintain that affordability of housing. So, you know, what is it, some ways in which, and I know that we'll talk about the Housing and Economic Strategic Plan, and some of the things that um were a part of those documents included things like um addressing our pilot program and kind of getting some of those things together, basically building that incentive package um to encourage the creation of housing, but also thinking through ways in which we can ensure maintaining affordability for the people who are here and the people who are yet to come. Um, and then I want to echo councilmember DeBala's point around housing quality. Um, it doesn't take much to walk into these buildings, and it is, in some cases, abysmal. We should be embarrassed that we have people in our community that are living in flooded-out buildings with rodents and everything else. It is abysmal. So how can we work to identify um the, 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 the things that we can control because we can't control everything, um, but build the partnerships that we need to build? And whose head do I need to crack externally um to try to make sure that we're able to build that network that we need in order to address those three issues? And I think, um, you know, as we are talking about development and as we're, we're talking about particularly our housing stock, um, it's, it's the residents, but I, I subscribe to the mindset is, you know, our businesses are tenants too. Um, and we, we can't assume that every business owner in our community is rolling in money. Um, many of the businesses I know in Ward Six actually live in this city. Um, and as things are developing, you could either take an approach where you just let it happen, because I could tell you in the crossroads, it's happening whether you want it to or not. Um, the rents are rising and we're losing businesses. So um I think it is important for us to think about both stakeholder types. How are we creating these opportunities of access for um current business owners, future business owners, to get the space that they need, that it's affordable for them to continue to be able to provide the great services to our community? So I, I commend you and I commend your team for really working to try to think outside of the box. Um, but I do know that, you know, over, over time, we will, as a council, be presented with a lot of different um things that we need to um vote on. And I think it's important for us to keep, as we're talking through our priorities, these larger-scale goals in mind, because um it, it is important and it is a balancing act. Um, and so I think that that's something that's, that's really critical.
Bravo, Mayor.
Oh, thank you. Um, so one thing that um I know code enforcement is in HCD.
Yeah.
I've heard lots of stuff about code enforcement. Um, where are we in terms of, I know the HCD move was recent. I know that we've heard some, uh, some concerns around notifications and the, how we're notifying residents of code issues. Has, has your group established, like, any types of priorities or goals as it relates to um code enforcement, notifications, things that you all are hoping to improve? Um, as, you know, again, recognizing that you all just received uh uh code enforcement, what was it, last year, just, just, you know? Um, and so how you may be envisioning making some, some tweaks to that process?
So I think part of it um is uh, there's an educational component. Um, there's a, there's a component of what we need to do, which is informing the city residents of the purpose of code enforcement. Um, I think often, the, the, the nature of what they do is, nobody's going to like them. I mean, so that's, you know, it's, it does not, it's not surprising to me that there's concern about what they do. Um, I think most of the complaints that we receive are mostly associated with the portion of our code um that describes in pretty great detail. It's an adopted portion from Montgomery County, um, property maintenance requirements. And the, the focus of code enforcement, the, the primary focus is always health and safety. So um they start there. Uh, and in a lot of ways, you know, that, 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 because their focus on the built environment uh and and structures and um safe access to places and pathways, it often does require them to make particular uh notices and comments on the quality of someone's um private property. That's, that's just what they do. And, and um, in order for their focus to change, it's really a, a, a code focus that needs to change. So um all code enforcement does is enforce the law. So they, they can enforce what's not there, um, but they have to enforce what is there. And we, I have never been willing to tell them to focus mostly on this portion of the code and that, that portion of the code. There is a, there is a hierarchy. Health and safety is at the top of that. But when they're in a neighborhood, as a, for instance, and they have identified a health and safety code violation or someone's reported it, what they do, um, just to explain some of the process, is that they, while they're there, they will then go and walk the block to see what other types of violations are there. Um, and so sometimes these things kind of raise to the level of council attention because they happen to be surveying a block, and so multiple people got a courtesy notice, um, which is where it begins. It begins with a courtesy notice. There's no violation, um, there's no fee associated with it. It's just a notice that, hey, this is a concern. It is technically a violation, but before we assign any um punitive costs, we just want to make you aware of it so that you can go ahead and take care of it. Those courtesy notices typically have a length of 30 days. Um, the next step would be a notice of violation if it's not cured. But even in the notice of violation portion, our, our code enforcement staff give a significant amount of leeway for people who are unable to um solve whatever the violation is immediately. Um, and it's not uncommon for them to give multiple extensions. Um, so I think, again, it's, it's, it's a position where you can't ever be right. Um, but I think if, you know, council has a concern about the kind of things that code enforcement has to focus on, then I think perhaps council should take a look at the code and see if there are any revisions that need to be made.
Yeah. Thank you for that. And I think, um, I think it's less about what should be covered and perhaps more around um how it is communicated. I, I, I know that that's something, um, uh, like the door hanger has been brought up multiple times. It's something that can be misinterpreted. And I know that at one point, um, the council had been briefed on the language that was in on the door hanger and the like, but I think it might be helpful for um maybe working with communications to see um how just the language that may be included on the code, on the hanger, and the clarity of some of that just might be helpful just to review because um I, 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 I think I often get just, people are just like, do I have to do this right now? Is this, so i- it, it, if there has been an update to that language, there has been. Okay, okay, okay. Um, so, yeah, yeah. Folks are shaking their heads like, yes, we did do an update on it. Okay.
So we need to see it.
Okay.
I think that's the one that we're using currently, right?
And it says, we're here to help. It doesn't say, it, it completely changed from the way it was written over eighteen months.
Is it possible for members of council to um get that door hanger language?
Sure.
Um, because I think that that would be really helpful, because I think a lot of times uh things spread on listserv. I just want to make sure that, that, that is, that is accurate.
And lucky for us, none of us seems to have gotten one recently.
Oh, someone.
Great. Um, councilmember, um, I, I have other lights, I have other questions, but um councilmember Gibson, is this a follow-up to this particular conversation?
Yes, it's a part of this, yeah.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, um, interface between community members, um, residents, renters, primarily homeowners, and, and the city doesn't happen a, a lot. We get our, our property taxes, those that are homeowner, and you, and then you may get uh code enforcement. So it is one of the primary interfaces. And so it, how it is done, how it is managed, how it is communicated, and is incredibly important. I'm glad that there's some language change there. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that currently the code enforcement, I guess I said, when does the code enforcement go to a particular uh site? And then you, you explained that then the block, which, which is another issue, but my, my understanding is that it's based on a complaint. And so that you have a, a complaint by one uh residence about their neighbor or whatever, and then presumably it's, 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 it's within your hierarchy, your safety hierarchy. Otherwise, maybe you, you don't need to go there, I don't know. But I, I do want to suggest that if that is the, that is the mechanism for uh making sure that all of our, our, our properties are well-maintained and safe, that, that may not be, uh, there, there may be other ways of doing it rather than the squeaky wheel next door that's complaining about their neighbor.
Part of, part of what code enforcement does is respond to um complaints, but they also generally survey the city. So they have routes that they take every day. Um, we only have two code enforcement officers, so it's a lot of ground to cover. Um, but they drive through the city, walk city neighborhoods um at regular intervals um and observe the landscape and determine if there are health and safety issues. Um, that is, again, high priority, but there's, there's, there's no quota, right? So it's not like you have to reach five health and safety issues in a neighborhood before you can issue a violation for anything else. But, but I guess my point is that um they are equitable in how they survey the neighborhoods, but they do respond specifically to complaints.
I, I, I'm glad to hear that there's some sort of standardized outreach and not just responding to um, to complaints. Um, I, I do think, though, that it, and, and I'm, if there is a, a serious safety issue, it needs to be addressed, that uh for efficiency's sake, it does make some sense, let's go down the whole block and see what else there is.
Hey, Randy?
Yeah.
Let, let's not do this now, for real. This is actually like, like getting into the weeds.
Councilmember Small. Councilmember Small. You are not acknowledged, and councilmember Gibson is having his time. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want us to, this is, this is an important issue to, to, to my constituents. It was brought up to me, and I, I guess I would um request that at some point, the council look at how it's done, the language that it's done, and the procedures.
Great, thank you so much. One last question that I have is about inspections. Um, and so I saw, uh, so just as a reminder, our rental apartment inspections are done through the county, and we have a contract with the county for that.
Yeah.
And um in terms of, and we could talk about this when we talk about the Housing and Economic Strategic Plan document, because I think there were some, some points around inspections and the like that was, that was there as well. Um, can you just kind of walk us a little bit quickly through um how we develop that um, that contract with the, with the county in terms of the frequency? contract with the, with the county in terms of the frequency of the inspections? Because, again, based on the public comment that we received today, I know that when I was in all of the multifamily buildings, there's, in many cases, a number of longstanding issues, and how we typically work with the county to get the properties inspected, but also work with them to see whether or not those issues have been resolved.
So, similar to our internal code enforcement staff, DHCA, the county inspectors, respond to, or conduct inspections for two purposes. One is based on complaints, the second is a part of our rent stabilization slash rental licensing process. So our rental licenses are issued either annually or biannually. Currently, that is dependent upon how many violations they had the year before. So if you have, don't quote me on a number, but I believe it's five or fewer violations, you are eligible and receive, eligible for and receive an annual li, biannual license. If you have greater than five violations, you receive a annual license. So the inspection happens next year. That's the rotation of regular inspections throughout the city. If there's a complaint, and complaints can be filed primarily through the city's, or the county's 311 service, but we also receive complaints and we will facilitate those complaints or concerns to the county too. Depending on the severity of the concern, DHCA will either be there within, I believe it's a day if it's a health and safety issue, or maximum of three days, I believe it is, if it's an issue that's not an immediate concern. They will come out, inspect, determine whether or not there's a violation, they will issue a notice of violation if necessary. They also have the ability to issue citations, they also have the ability to condemn units that are unfit to, for habitation. So that's kind of the, the, the realm in which the, the contracts operate. The contracts themselves, the, the current contract, which was executed, I believe, in October of last year, is a two or three-year contract? Three-year contract? And we have been working with DHCA for as long as I've looked in the records for, for, for managing our inspection process. They have a larger staff, they have the capacity to do this throughout Montgomery County, and we don't. And given the volume of work that would need to be done in order for us to adhere to our own inspection requirements, we need to rely on external staff unless we build our own internal capacity to conduct the inspections ourselves.
Great, thank you so much.
Just a real quick clarification on that. So referring someone to call 311 if they're having a problem and need the inspection is the correct thing for them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Eubanks, for this presentation tonight. Very informative, I appreciate that. Regarding the, your last statement about the code enforcement, the council having the staff to do that, when the city used to do it, and we switched over to having the county do it, we transferred our, our staff over to the county at that time, so, to help them get the capacity needed to do it. So maybe a similar situation could happen if the council had decided we wanted to take that on again ourselves. But anyways, as far as the housing, the rental housing inspections go, I have full confidence in your leadership to be able to, to manage that properly, and, and if there are any problems arise, and I'm confident that you would be taking care of them for us. I appreciate that, too. Having that feeling makes me feel better.
Thank you, Councilmember.
And as far as the, the other housing inspections, I would say, you know, you say that they're pretty standard, but I think there is, they are mostly objective, but there is some subjectivity to those inspections. But I would just, again, I, I appreciate your explanation tonight about, you know, how that whole process works, and I would just say that I would hope that maybe the council could look into that. I think you offered a suggestion which makes a whole lot of sense, and that is not to just cut and paste the county code, but I think that, that this, residents of this city would appreciate something that's a little more tailored to this community. And that's not your problem, that's our problem. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and Councilmember, you, you remind me, I should also note that the inspection process has been a odd, for lack of a better word, since 2020, for a number of reasons. Partly because the county was unwilling and unable to walk into units and conduct inspections. And so there are, for the last, I guess between 2020 and the end of 2021, a significant lapse in the number and routine of inspections over that time. And so compared to years past, we have a lot of catching up to do. I think that was compounded by the fact that the Housing Division was a party of one for several months, and a party of two for even longer. And it is, as I said earlier, is supposed to be a party of four. A lot of those positions are fulfilling statutory requirements. The two that are currently vacant, the rental licensing person and the rent reporting person, directly work with the, under the rent stabilization and rental licensing process. And so we've been working very hard to get that staff back online, as well as Devin, our, our new housing manager, and, and Jean Kerr, our longstanding housing specialist, have been working double time to kind of address all of the longstanding, outstanding inspections and, and get us back up to speed. But there will be a continued lack in kind of where we're supposed to be, from where we are, for the next year at least.
I would like to suggest that you might be able to fill those positions, at least temporarily, by transferring some people from Housing Inspection. I think the public would appreciate that. Thank you. That was supposed to be a joke.
Councilmember Hanzat?
Well, maybe this is a totally unrealistic statement, therefore. I'm wondering if any of the ARPA funds have been allocated, and this is a question for anyone who knows the answer, to, for example, maybe augmenting the capacity of the inspection staff. Right now, recognizing, I'm seeing, I'm getting so many people coming in to me, telling me about mold, dragging me into their apartment, showing me all the things that have happened over the last two years, I'm sure everybody is. I'm just wondering if there's any way that the city can support filling that, that big, huge gap more quickly? Is it just out of the realm of possibility because there just aren't enough human bodies?
It's a conversation, it wouldn't, we couldn't fulfill it with ARPA money, because the, the, the contract is with the county, it's county staff, so the county, we would have to have a conversation about upping their staff. It would cost us more money, perhaps, I guess to your point, we could use ARPA money to pay the additional costs. But I guess that's the conversation we would have to all have, and it, it would have to be the counties, they'd have to be willing to increase their staff. They, they allocate staff across the county, and they hire staff across the county, based on the, I guess the average number of inspections that need to be done, and how many they can get done in a month, or how many they expect, I guess, county-wide to get done in a month on average. So I don't know how much of a lift it would be to make such a request, even if we did have the money, but it's, I think it's worth looking into and it's worth having a conversation with the HCA.
Okay, thank you. Will let us know if there's something we can do to support that. I would heartily support something like that. I, I also wondered, for example, if, if the city could provide warm bodies, you know, with some of our ARPA money, to literally go in and gather some of the data that might be used then by the Housing Department, and they could more efficiently run through the apartments. But again, that, that's just my naivety, not knowing how the process works. Anyway, we could talk, talk later. Thank you.
Okay. No more lights. Thank you so much. You're out of the hot seat.
Thank you.
Director Eubanks.
Next up, we have Director Braithwaite, Public Works.
Yeah, good evening. Sure, you can remind me which button.
Okay, all right. If, if folks are okay, first, I just want to say, we are at 9:45. I'm getting the signal that members need a, a quick five-minute break.
Okay.
So Director Braithwaite, before you get started, let's take a five-minute break, and we will come back at 9:50. Thank you. Thank you to those that are watching, for allowing us to have this quick five-minute break. And then, or so, all right. And where we left off, we have our Director of Public Works, Daryl Braithwaite, who is going to talk through Public Works and Stormwater.
Yeah, well, thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. I, I will go through this briefly. I know there is lots of questions, and I, I think I want to say first and foremost, many of the topics that I'm going to bring up, as did my coworkers there, really could take a, a full evening of conversation. There is quite a lot we do, and I think you understand the breadth and depth of that, and the implications of it all. There's so much work that's done on a day-to-day basis in the city. A lot of what you've heard is policy, my end of it is really nuts and bolts and some of the more structural things. While this slide says Public Works and Stormwater, I just want to say that I, Stormwater is located, the management of Stormwater is located within the Public Works Department, but there is not time this evening to talk about the Stormwater program. I really would love to have a full couple of hours to walk everybody through the Stormwater program. We have some wonderful information on the city's website, which is a good starting point if you haven't looked at it yet. But there is a nexus here, and, and so I do, do want to recognize that, and you'll see the ways those interlap with staffing and projects.
Council, Director Braithwaite, I just want to interrupt you for a quick second to just let the councilmembers know as you're forming your questions. We will have a separate session, work session, that's being added to the agenda later, to discuss Stormwater.
Great.
So, just so that you all know, that is something that we are working to make sure that we have added, so that we are not here all night addressing Stormwater-specific questions.
Great. With that, basically, the, the better slide, I think, is the following slide. In the Public Works Department, we have nine divisions that cover the breadth of our areas of responsibility. Our FTE count is just under 37 and a half. You'll see there, and I think pertinent to my point earlier, some staff are shared between the Stormwater Management and the City Engineering Office. So that 1.25, looks like the slide is, oops, yeah, cuts off. Anyway, this, I think, is a better, better clear definition of those nine divisions and our staffing. So in the Administrative Office, that's myself, the deputy, and our administrative assistant. Building Maintenance, we have six and a quarter FTEs, that's a supervisor and an assistant, a custodial crew leader and three custodians. We do have a weekend custodian that works four hours a day on Saturdays and Sundays. Vehicle Maintenance, we have a supervisor and two mechanics. Right-of-Way Maintenance is a seven-person staff, a supervisor, two crew leaders, an equipment operator, three technicians. Our sanitation- Our Sanitation Division is a staff of 10, Supervisor, four drivers and five technicians. Our Sustainability Division is a Division of One. One of the things you'll see in our Division and similar to others is we have a lot of one-person professional offices. Sustainability is one of them. The Urban Forest Division is another, as well as our City Engineer. Vegetation Maintenance Division has a Supervisor, three Technicians. We also have seasonal staff that we bring in, in the spring and fall, and that's represented in that 0.92 FTEs. City Engineer, as I mentioned, we have a halftime of our City Engineers, split between Engineering and Stormwater. And three-quarters of our Construction Manager, shared three-quarter and one-quarter with the Stormwater Management Program. A very lean staff for quite a lot of operational oversight. The administrative functions relate to Customer Service and Administrative Support and overall management of the Division. Our Building Maintenance Division takes care of all the facility repairs, equipment maintenance. There's four facilities that we're currently overseeing, as you know, Community Center, Public Works, the New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center and Hefner. As far as Custodial Services, we have a fifth building now with the Temporary Library over on New Hampshire Avenue. Our Equipment Maintenance Division manages over 86 vehicles and hundreds of pieces of equipment. The most part of our... We have a full shop, full-service shop, and most of our maintenance and repair needs, particularly all of our PMs, happen in-house. So it's probably 80% of the work that is done in vehicle maintenance takes place in-house. The exception, of course, is warranty work, accident repairs, or very large, major vehicle maintenance repairs. Our Right-of-Way Division maintains parks. We have seven-C playgrounds. That's often a source of confusion for residents. There are playgrounds in the city that are not owned or maintained by the city. There are Montgomery Parks facilities. We have had a sea change in County Park Maintenance in our area and improvements. And it's really, I have to, hats off to the Mayor as a big part of that with the Hillwood Manor Playground. I think the effort and energy you put into that clearly showed results after decades of neglect for the Down County Parks. The Montgomery Park System is now in the process of, if not completing, getting underway three major park renovations. Silver Spring Intermediate, the Kenneback Houston, Slidewake Parkway and Hillwood Manor. And the playgrounds they're putting in there are fantastic and certainly not like we've ever seen before. So the amount of energy, effort and resources that the county is finally paying attention to this part of the county, I think is a clear reflection of the political power and continued perseverance of people like yourself, Mayor, that have made that an issue for the County Park System. We've also had some improvements in our collaboration and co-working with Montgomery Parks. We've been able to get a number of programs and projects, particularly Stormwater projects, implemented on County Parklands. As long as we're paying the bill, the county is willing to give us the permits, oversee it, oversight, and collaborate with us. They have a lot of resources in terms of technical expertise and we've really welcomed the number of new projects that we've been able to collaborate with them on. But back to our Right-of-Way Division. In addition to the parks and playgrounds, they maintain roadways, street signs, the street sweeping operation, our fall leaf collection operation, and of course, any snow or weather or emergency response. They're their primary staff responding to those situations. Our Solid Waste Division, I have to say, is probably one of the most beloved divisions in the city in terms of people's feelings about them. And we have long-term employees in that division that have been here for a while. They love the work they do. They love working for the city and it's a real pleasure to work with them. In terms of our collection size, about 3,800 households receive city trash services, all single-family properties, as well as buildings of 12 units and less. We also take care of trash collection in the public rights of way. The city has trash, recycling, yard waste and food waste collection. That is our newest program and it was started in 2016. We've kind of been a flagship program for our jurisdiction, our area, in starting the curbside food waste collection. Like our recycling program, we are totally dependent on the processing end of that. That three-trial circle can't happen unless all pieces are in place. So we could collect it, but if we don't have a place to take it, it ceases to be useful. So we are totally dependent on processing capability and we have benefited greatly from Prince George's County's foresight in developing the food waste operation. And looking down the road, what we'd like to do is combine food waste and yard waste and we hope there'll be an opportunity to do that. It would certainly reduce some of our equipment and staffing needs, would also make a lot of sense in terms of number of trucks on the road, number of collections taking place. So that's something that we're working on. And Prince George's County has started that program on a pilot basis, so we're hoping to make some progress there. We currently use Montgomery County for the refuse processing and transfer station. From time to time, we've used other locations. We've used the Waste Management Facility in DC, primarily cost basis. So we do identify processing needs because we have no processing facility within the city. And we collaborate and keep in mind what's most cost-effective and provides the best service. Our Sustainability Office, as I mentioned, is a one-person office. It also has intern hours associated with it. That position is currently vacant and has been since October. We did a very robust recruitment process. We're very excited with a candidate that then didn't accept a position. So we're back to square one. Very sorely needed. That said, and again, in a nod to the collaboration that we do regularly, HCD and Public Works worked collaboratively on the main sustainability program, which has taken place this year through ARPA with the $500,000 electrification and energy efficiency grants for multifamily. So it is a total testament to that collaboration that this program got up and running, happened and through the support of HCD staff, most notably McKenna, we've been able to keep that program going and made 20 awards. I do have the data, Councilmember Dibala, about building size and so I'm happy to share that with you. Most were four units and less. 128-unit building, 112-unit building, an eight-unit building, handful of six, but most were smaller, smaller buildings. We have a number of things that we'd like to move forward with in sustainability, but until that position is filled, we're really in a holding pattern. Couple of things that were on the docket was building energy performance work, where we were going to take a look at using the county's plans for building energy performance, but notching it down to our size because their building level and building load was going to be much greater. So we were looking at what the implementation for that would be and have had AC-EE do some research work for us and development of that. So that's kind of sitting in the queue, waiting to be worked on. Again, timing has been really helpful. Montgomery County let out an RFP and is about, I think, in the spring or early summer to go full steam with an electrification program that our residents will be eligible to apply for. So as soon as that is up and running, we will certainly advertise and advocate. And there is set-asides for Tacoma Park residents within that program, so we're looking forward to that. So a lot of the development of that program that the county issued was really on the starting point of what the city did in the prior two years with our electrification and energy efficiency program. So we were really able to help them develop and design the program. So that is, again, something to look forward to in the spring and summer. Our Vegetation Maintenance Division manages over 200 sites, 32 gardens, 85 streetscapes, 72 Stormwater facilities, and also provides mowing service on 37 city-owned fields and properties. Again, that's a staff of a Supervisor and three FTEs, one of which is currently vacant. I mentioned the Urban Forest Manager Division being, again, a Division of One. A lot is done out of that department and Marty Frye, our Urban Forest Manager, has really, has really made this program bloom. And I'll speak to some of the, some of the new programs and projects he's got going on. But the responsibilities include managing the city's trees and forested areas, oversee tree planting in the right-of-way, administers the Tree Permit Program, which includes tree impact assessment, tree protection plan and tree removal. And that might also be one of those subsets, maybe when we're doing our Stormwater deep dive, we can do a Tree Permit Program deep dive because that actually is a very intricate and intensive program that the city has spent a lot of time on. And in fact, every five to seven years, we go through a major ordinance review and we completed that not too long ago. And so it's helpful, I think, because similar to, along the lines of code enforcement, you all may get calls from residents confused or upset about the city's tree requirements. And so I'd really like to make sure you're set up with the basic information and the how-tos. And similar to code enforcement, a lot of what we rely on is in the code. So if someone's upset with it, it is code language. It is law. It's not being subjectively identified by our staff to make people's lives miserable. It really, there's environmental and broader goals that develop that program. And it really is a model in the nation, the city's tree protection program in particular, but also strict tree removal and replanting programs. We also have a new program, which I will talk through a bit later, called Tree Tacoma, which is encouraging private tree planting on private property. And also, very importantly, they coordinate with utility companies to reduce tree impacts, particularly the electric utility when they come through the city, but also gas company and others. Our City Engineer oversees our street restoration program, traffic calming sidewalk programs, provides engineering support to other city departments, and reviews and issues permits for driveway aprons, pods or dumpsters, storage units, and work in the right-of-way. I mentioned when we talked earlier Monday through the ARPA program and the City Street Restoration Program, but we do do a fairly broad evaluation of street roadway condition and that sets the basis for our annual road resurfacing work. Let's see. Couple of the special initiatives I wanted to call out, though the list could go on and on and on. As I mentioned, we started a new program this year called Tree Tacoma. It was implemented this year. The kickoff was in September. We provide canopy trees at no cost through a collaborative program with Casey Trees. They provide onsite consultation and planting. So when you sign up for that program, they contact you. They actually come out to your property, walk the site, discuss best locations for trees and types with a strong focus on canopy trees, native trees absolutely. And we have a carve-out in that program for multifamily properties and areas with lower tree canopy. And the interest in this program has been, we knew it was going to be popular, but it's surpassed our initial expectations, particularly because I think the outreach and whatnot we've done so far has been through, you know, speaking to community groups and the newsletter. We're currently booked out for the first year and so we'll bring to the council the possibility of a budget amendment and also look to FY '24 as adding additional funding. The one thing I want to note in this program is the funding is through the Tree Fund. It is not general fund-funded. The city has over $200,000 currently in the city's Tree Fund. That Tree Fund is established based on when a person does get a tree removal permit. They have to replant based on a formula criteria in the law or pay the equivalent of that tree planting into the Tree Fund. Also, if there are fines, violations, those funds also go into the Tree Fund. So we have a very large Tree Fund whose purpose is solely to plant trees. And so the program that Marty has developed, Tree Tacoma, has been the most effective and efficient way of turning those dollars into trees. And not only just randomly, but also well-placed, very high-quality nursery stock with people clearly understanding what they're getting, how they have to care for it, what needs to happen. So we've been able to really blend that kind of one-on-one, property-by-property approach with advocating for increased tree planting. So so far, 150 trees have been placed, 65 planted, 86 ready to go, with several dozen more that are just waiting for the paperwork. So our initial year goal was to plant 250 trees, the bulk of it on private property, some of it on our public right-of-ways. So we will clearly meet that goal probably before the month is out. So something, something more to think about. We have the first EV street sweeper in the District Metropolitan Maryland-Virginia area. We're really looking forward to get Donna's expertise for a big public rollout of this. One of the impacts of the pandemic is the council made the decision to purchase the electric street sweeper in September of 2021. We received the sweeper in December of 2022. So well over a year. It was, it was sitting in Ukraine. I kid you not. So it took a long, long time to get the sweeper here. So it has arrived. Among the things that we're thinking of doing is a naming, you know, community naming, name the sweeper, you know, vehicle rap kind of thing. We want to have it in the Fourth of July Parade and we're anxious to get it out on the street because part of the challenge of not having a sweeper for a year and three months is our old sweeper was no longer operable after about six months into that timeframe. So we have been without a functioning street sweeper and you can tell when you look at city streets. So we really need to get the street sweeper out. The other advantage of the sweeper is it can go in tighter places. It operates more easily. It does not require a CDL to drive it, which our other sweeper did. Its hopper is slightly smaller, but we, we transfer the sweepings into a container that we have at Public Works and then dispose of that properly. But, you know, anywhere you go in Tacoma Park is 2.2 square miles away, so we're not driving too far. So we're really anxious to get that sweeper on the street, named, adopted and much-beloved. It's a critical part of our Stormwater Management Program, as well as just good management and maintenance for city streets. Last year in August, we kicked off a household battery drop-off at Public Works. That has been quite popular. We take all types of household batteries. Information is on the city's website. We are in a program with Call to Recycle, a national company, that they do all the management processing, handling of the batteries. All we have to do is make sure they're properly contained, boxed and shipped back. So we are getting steady stream of batteries into Public Works at our, at our office. In reference to new sidewalk requests that are either in process or ready to go, I would also be happy to talk at length about our sidewalk program, which is established by resolution of the council, has a very clear process by which residents can make requests, also has a very clear process by which the city has to present information. We partner with engineering firms to do the design, which includes survey of the right-of-way to make sure we know exactly where we can build these things, where we're encroaching or not encroaching on private property. And there is a, there's a quite well-established process. We've been doing this now, new sidewalk development since 2010. So we, we know our process. We've worked with many, many communities around the city to establish sidewalks. And so the process is one that can often be challenging in a neighborhood when you have residents on one side or the other. So we really try to take a collaborative approach to the degree we can, work with individual concerns and try to develop a sidewalk project. and try to develop a sidewalk project that, you know, goes as far as we can go to meet the requirements of ADA, accessibility, construction reasonability, but also acknowledges that we're interrupting what used to be someone's front lawn. So we currently have just gone through the process on Domer Avenue. We just completed the final construction vote of the neighborhood, December 6th, no, January 6th. Overwhelming positive support in that. So that was one that will go to the queue of construction. A Sligo Mill Road is a sidewalk we were able to build in Ward 3. So that just got completed with a fairly simple design review and construction vote. Belford Place is one that's currently in the works. We've had our two initial community meetings, and our engineering firm is working out continuing design development. We also have a combined traffic calming and sidewalk project on Larch, Kentwell, and Hopewell avenues that went through a very long, somewhat stymied by the pandemic, but we were at this, I think, since 2019. It's a project sorely needed that will help to address school student safety, traffic calming, as well as accessibility in that neighborhood. So that's one we hope to start in the spring construction schedule. And Kansas Lane is a long-going sidewalk project that has not gone to development yet. In terms of traffic calming requests, similar to what I mentioned about new sidewalks, the city has resolution regulations in place for how traffic calming measures are presented. Currently, it's a neighborhood initiative through a petition process. So when a neighborhood goes through that process, that kicks off a series of events that involve the city and also involve the council. For the sidewalk projects, the council isn't involved other than funding the program in terms of voting on the development of a design. But for traffic calming requests, they come back to the council for authorization. So we currently have a number of approved speed humps, primarily the 7900 block of Glenn Side Drive, two on Auburn Avenue, three on Prince George's Avenue. The Fourth Avenue traffic calming was already installed last year, so those have been completed. We've also had requests and conversation with some residents on both Second Avenue and the 7500 block of Jackson Avenue that we anticipate coming forward. Again, happy to talk in great length offline, or you can also go on the city's website to see both the new sidewalk and the traffic calming process to better understand the steps that are go through. The remaining equipment purchases that we're planning to do in this year, we have a roll-off trailer, an aerial lift. Our fuel dispensing software has been upgraded, much improved and much needed. We have also pivoted, shifted to an entirely online permit application process now. We still have the ability to take manual, in-the-mail, check-in-hand permit applications, but the intention has always been to move to an online permit application process for simplicity and for ease of all parties concerned, both applicant as well as the city in terms of reviewing and issuing the permit. So now everything's available online. You get an email, you can pay online, you get notified of the process. So that's through the MyTKPK app. So again, on the city's website, you can access all the permit applications that Public Works is responsible for online. I also wanted to mention the Stormwater Resiliency Study. The study was funded through the council last year. It actually is not funded through the stormwater budget, but actually through the general fund. It was a special project that the then council identified. We kicked that off in the fall with the Low Impact Development Center. They did a presentation here before the contract was awarded. We've had one remote community session to kick off the project with the community. And they're now in the stage of evaluating the 20 locations that are considered flood-prone in the city. And they'll be starting to do site visits and data analysis for that. So that is supposed to be kicked off in the coming weeks. We hope to have a schedule from them that shows which of the areas they're going to visit. If any of you are interested in participating, I can share that information with you. You can also share it with those that you think might be interested in your community. The intention of the site visit isn't a community meeting. It's not a one-on-one, you know, sort of discussions really for them to gather information. But both city staff as well as the LIDC staff, you know, will certainly answer any questions and be available. They're basically gathering information for the purpose of informing their further deliverables, of which there are several. They'll be providing us a dashboard that residents can use to evaluate stormwater generation on their properties based on certain levels of rain. It'll be an interactive tool. They'll also be developing measures, basic general information about the techniques and types of stormwater control measures that we can then add to our website so people can have more direct information about the options available on their properties for stormwater. And then they'll be doing this evaluation of 20 sites and then a further detailed analysis of two with the purpose of kind of front-loading the next range of stormwater improvements in the city. One of the things that you all will do when you're evaluating the budget is to set the stormwater budget. So what you will learn is that we have a five-year CIP that includes future five years of stormwater projects. And so we already have stormwater projects that are in the queue for the next five years. So some of what we may determine through the Low Impact Development Center is there may be some that they identify that are a higher priority. We'll have to rearrange our analysis. But again, I do hope to speak, and I understand that I will, in great length about our stormwater program, how it's funded, what it does, and some of the efforts that we have underway. And with that, that is all I have.
Councilmember Small.
I defer to someone else. Switch up the order.
Next in line is Councilmember Gibson.
Thank you. And thank you. You guys do so much with what you've got, and it's just so impressive. I am very, very pleased to hear about and have been a little bit involved in the Low Impact Development Center's pilot project and went to one of the site visits early on. And, you know, there's a wealth of information from this company, and they've had references, or they've worked in other communities in the state. And it's been very, very well-received. I would say to all of us here that where these site visits are going to take place to kind of look at, if I understand correctly, these sites were selected by the city because those sites had perhaps complaints or issues about stormwater through the years, and that was a basis of selection. So you might want to look at that as it impacts various neighborhoods. And certainly, I think frankly that the residents that are very tightly bound to where the worst problems are might provide information that would be useful to LIDC. And also, I do know, and you have worked with a non-local organizations, Tacoma Stormwater Solutions, a part of Climate Action, and they have been providing information and expertise as well, which I expect that will continue to be useful to the city. So I'm looking forward to a follow-up meeting referred to about stormwater. But it's just a really exciting, I thank the previous council for putting money into that. It's just the beginning of a larger issue. Stormwater is where climate change and environmental degradation is going to hit this community, is hitting this community in a big way. So to get a handle with it beyond what we can do with, on private property, on public property as well as on private property, look at the water. So I appreciate that. Look forward to the follow-up session. I wanted to also just comment briefly on the Sustainability Office, Sustainability Director. And I'm sorry that your person that you wanted to recruit rocked away. I don't know what the, I suppose I could ask, but what the job description was. Just an observation that after having many discussions with Gina Mathias, the previous Sustainability Director, she very much was focused on stationary energy, which is one way, just one impact, a way that we can mitigate climate change and environmental degradation. I talked with her about the possibility of certification process that involved a build-on to the home energy certification, home and habitat. So I want to hold up the idea that there be sort of, that the ecosystems that are in our backyards, but that they be, that residents can do more and can learn more and can be educated about how to protect the environment. And this impacts a lot of different things. It certainly impacts stormwater. It impacts the quality of the plant and animal and insect life and soil that we have here. So I'd like to see, I don't know if it's your next round of candidates, that one of those candidates is not only well-versed in reducing carbon footprint, but also protecting ecosystems. They are very much integrated, and I would advocate for a sort of a cross-functional approach to those issues. Certainly Marty's work and Anna's work with vegetation fits into that. I see them so connected. I want to see, to build on that. And then in terms of connectivity and connecting the dots, I just want to hold up, as much as I love sidewalks, sidewalks are a huge carbon footprint. So I would hope that our sustainability effort not only recognizes what we're doing to reduce energy and plant trees and stuff, but we have to measure what we're doing negatively in terms of our carbon footprint, which means measuring, you know, what our increased sidewalks do. And maybe there are alternatives to those impermeable sidewalks, pervious services, other ways to meet the pedestrian needs without making the carbon footprint that much heavier.
Thanks, Randy. The Sustainability Manager position is currently on the website. So if you want to see the job description, it is there in all its glory. I appreciate and very well hear your comments in terms of the broad approach to sustainability, and different communities have managed it differently. One of the kind of mandates and raison d'etre of our program is the resolution that the council passed, our climate resolution. So that's really driving the program. The council can certainly take a look at that, broaden it, change the focus, address some of these other issues. But that really, over the past years, since our first Sustainability Manager was on board, the focus has really been greenhouse gas emissions, energy reduction, green power, looking at both building as well as transportation as our two main sources of greenhouse gas emissions, and trying to figure out how to influence, reduce, and make improvements both on the city front, city facilities, as well as to the public at large. I would be remiss if I didn't say we just received from the Council of Governments our updated greenhouse gas emissions inventory, as did everybody in the district Maryland and Virginia. So we'd love to share that information with you. On first broad brush, when you look at the chart, the number's going down. It looks great, but then you have to overlay the impact of the pandemic on that. So the pandemic just took cars off the road, and everybody, even those communities that aren't doing anything, our numbers went down. But that's not to say that certainly the efforts that we've been making have had a big impact on energy efficiency, green power. And, you know, we can, again, that's a topic, huge topic, but happy to talk further.
Thank you. Just maybe a question there is, is it a motion or a suggestion? I'd like this really to follow up on looking at that climate resolution, if that's what's guiding, I mean, if, as that is guiding this Public Works focus and its strategies with regard to climate change and there's related loss of biodiversity, can I make a motion that we look at that at some point? Or how does it, I'm learning how the process works, so excuse me.
No, no problem at all. So in our Wednesday, January the 25th meeting, we will have a work session and receive an update on the strategic plan items, one of which was the sustainability, one of which is the Sustainability and Climate Action Framework, which was a part of that resolution.
So it is scheduled on the 25th.
On the 25th.
Along with the other stuff, yeah. Good point.
Right. All right, thank you very much.
No worries.
Councilmember Small.
Thank you, Mayor. Darryl, I want to be specific about this because we sort of talked offline. And I've had conversations with the bras and some other people about the process by which we make decisions about traffic calming and such things. I would say that there is a perception that I have and that came up during the election that we are able as a city to sort of hide behind the process that we currently have that really just requires a certain level of organization or squeaky wheel that may or may not be reflective of the amount of effort or energy that certain neighborhoods have to put into things. If you are in certain sort of socioeconomic areas, then you come home at 8:00 or 7:30 from work, you don't have a chance to do certain kinds of organizing. So I guess I would challenge Public Works and to coordinate with the police department on these kinds of issues. And I know that you're not necessarily going to be there tomorrow, so I wanted to make sure I said something specifically to you about the sheer volume of new young families that are in Ward 6. And it's usually about a 10-year cycle. Been there 20 years, so I've been noticing when we start to turn over new kids and we're in a baby boom kind of glut in the area. There are a lot of people who are very intentional about moving to Tacoma Park to be a part of any number of things. They are not safe on the roads at between 3:00 and 7:00, let's say, generally. There's a lot of emphasis placed on the police department and enforcement, but we have not necessarily done the same sorts of emphasis on traffic calming and other sorts of things, chicanes, other things. We've had a lot of issues about our personal traffic circles. So I would challenge you to come to Ward 6 at 4:00 and watch people disrespect the buses profoundly and watch people run the stop signs and watch people cut through from New Hampshire to try to get to university. And we all live there, ooh ah, so we want to be able to do it. But also, the people who live in that area are effectively under siege by vehicles and lack of awareness of the intensity of those issues, notwithstanding what happens on New Hampshire Avenue at the corner where the Taco Bell is or anything like that. I would echo Randy's sentiments about maybe considering permeable pavers or any sort of the new sort of things that we could do. And I would propose to you that we should have a resiliency coordinator instead of a sustainability coordinator because it's too late for all that. But thank you.
Yeah. Well, thanks for your comments, and there's a lot to unpack there. There was a Safe Roadways Committee, I might be saying the name wrong, that made some recommendations that the city staff have looked at in terms of altering the current process that's on the books. And we've discussed that at some length, but I think there's definitely some follow-up needed. Currently, the process for sidewalks doesn't have a heavy lift. You can pick up your phone, send an email, you get it. Council member, you can, you know, starts the process. That is not the same for traffic calming. Traffic calming currently requires the petition, two-thirds of the people signing a petition. So there is that. The other thing, and again, I have been in Ward The other thing, and again, I have been in Ward 6 at 3:30. And believe me, I, I know what you're speaking about. I've experienced it personally. In fact, the mayor and I were on Hopewell, Arch and Kentland and practically got run over several times in the process of that evaluation. Years ago, not that many years ago, the city tried to do a neighborhood approach for traffic calming. And, and New Hampshire Gardens was one of the neighborhoods that was selected, as was Long Branch, Sligo and south of Sligo. So there are three neighborhoods that were selected. The city brought in an engineering firm. They tried to do a sort of a system wide, neighborhood wide approach. And two of those projects went on to actually implement some traffic calming measures. So it isn't as if it's been ignored. Work has been done, insufficient work, I think, for the volume and the pressure, particularly the purple line construction pressure that is placed on, on your neighborhood, certainly has made a big impact. But the speed bumps, the stop signs, the traffic circles were all an outgrowth of that process. Interestingly enough, in the neighborhoods where it moved forward, it was not loved by all. It was very, very contentious. One neighborhood, it was so contentious, we were never able to do anything. Just the amount of disagreement and difficulty in moving anything forward. I don't think the traffic pressures were as much back then. It was probably at least 10 years ago. I think traffic has, has increased exponentially.
I think the realities of those apps and the cut, and cut through traffic have just made a different, a situation that was already sort of bad that you guys attempted to address. It's not like the traffic circles and the enforcement didn't happen.
Right.
It's just that the, as things change, it is something that I, that I think we're going to continue to look at. And again, I would, would appreciate or send my appreciation to the mayor for her previous efforts in this area. Thanks, Darryl.
Councilmember Gibson, that's the old light. Awesome. No worries. Councilmember DeBala?
Yeah. Several things, starting with, I was going to mention, following up on what, what Darryl said. In October, the city, the, the previous city council took a look at, another look at the resident safe streets committee recommendations along with the city staff. And we passed a resolution that's a sort of a direction setting that's a lot like what you're talking about. I'm going to send it to everybody on the council so you, sorry, away from the mic. I'll send it tonight to everybody on the council so you can read it and see if that's the direction you want to go in that we are, we were suggesting for you. And that would be something on my list is to, you know, recognizing the experiments and trying to do something a little more comprehensive rather than only resident request. And looking at some of the other aspects of it that are outlined in there. That's a place for us to start, I think, for us to start our conversations as a council on this topic. It seems to me, I'm going to jump around a little. It seems to me that on permeable pavement, we, we have costs because for the sections by trees, you already put them in. And so I would be interested, maybe this is too in the weeds for this, but since it came up, be interested in the relative cost because I understand they're, whoa, I want to say roughly double.
More than that, about five times more expensive.
Oh, okay. Well, so I was off, but I.
But that, that being said, we do.
The point being, not 10% more, a lot more.
Yeah, we, we do use permeable surfaces. We've tried several. We're now kind of landed on something called Perky pave. It's a rubberized asphalt special sauce type of thing that allows both water and oxygen to go through, a surface that looks very much like asphalt. We primarily use it when we're doing sidewalk work in, adjacent to trees. So it's a, it's a measure to try to enhance the, the challenging environment that our existing tree canopy has, particularly when we're doing work either adding new, where it hadn't existed before, or doing the ADA compliance work on our sidewalk. And I failed to mention that we do extensive ADA compliance work on sidewalks. So that's another topic that we could go into.
And another price escalator on sidewalk work. So another thing on my list is, is perhaps you've already done this, sent out the 20 locations? Do I have this and I just don't remember? Or could you please send it out?
Did we have the map? The map might exist on, there is a Stormwater Resiliency Study webpage that has both the proposal that LIDC is doing as well as a link to the first community meeting that we had. I believe on that is also included, the map with the 20 locations. I think they've slightly been amended, so I'll take a look at that. We have a new, a new map with those locations.
I would appreciate that because I don't, I remember the meeting, but I don't remember the map.
Yeah. And we've got, we've got a draft, I just got today, a draft schedule from LIDC for the site visits. So they've got one a week, next week and on, I think most are either Mondays or Wednesdays in the afternoon.
So I'd appreciate that.
They're going to bulk them three or four at a time. So I'll be happy to share that with council members.
And, and kudos on the online permit processes. I know that, the last I heard, you were trying it with trees.
Yes, yes.
And so far, so good. So that's great. Thank you. I think that's a big improvement. And of course, I have a lot, a lot to say about trees and stormwater and native plantings and other topics that came up. But I'll just confine my comments tonight to Public Works, mainstream Public Works. Thank you for the work that your crews do. Because you're right, they do awesome work. That's it for me for now.
Councilmember Feltcher?
I just want to make sure that I understand with the traffic calming requests, the process doesn't involve any sort of study. It just involves like getting a petition and getting a request?
Yeah, currently, the process that we have is a petition driven process where you're, it's primarily looking at speed humps, bump outs, roadway narrowing, those types of, of measures. The residents can pick specifically what they want, or they could say, we just want, here's the problem. We want the city to figure it out. When we get those petitions back that say, we don't know what we want, we just want the city to figure it out, we will then have meetings with the neighborhood to get clarification about what might work best, what the source of the problem is. Is it, is it blowing through stop signs? Or is it, you know, traveling too fast on the roadway? You know, the, you know, try to get some clarity. For the most part, the traffic calming is done as an in-house evaluation. We do have resources of, you know, traffic engineers and outside consultants that we use. We have two engineering firms on contract that we use for a lot of our sidewalk and other type of design. So there is the potential of bringing in engineering support if there was a more technical approach that needed to be addressed. One of the ways that this process is currently set up, and it's not ideal, but it's the way it has worked here, is really a block by block, street by street approach. When we've tried to do broader neighborhood approaches, it becomes very difficult because it's really hard to get an entire neighborhood to agree about what the changes might be. And it also typically involves a lot more impacts to people's personal driving habits. If you turn a road one way, or if you make it a dead end, or if you're, you know, making kind of significant changes to roadways, the impact on a personal level can sometimes be enough to create a challenge for people.
And then just, just for clarification, is there any other way that, that trapping, traffic calming happens in the city other than through these requests? Like, let's say that someone, a council member might live in a busy area that they were really concerned about. Are they able to start some sort of request without going through?
The way the resolution currently reads for traffic calming, there is not a workaround for that. The council did amend the process for sidewalks to make it simplify their request process, but that doesn't exist for traffic calming. One of the reasons why it's remained that way for so long is because it's really helpful for the neighborhood to have that kind of conversation before the city steps in. I don't know if it's still that same, you know, we have, we have experienced things in the past where residents kind of want to collaborate themselves before the city is involved in the process. Now, you have some neighborhoods that are entirely different. But oftentimes, if it's a city idea, hey, we've got a great idea. Our planning office thinks we should do this here. People go like, react. So it has been a helpful process to have the neighborhood collaborate, talk to themselves, sit on the porch, work out the, don't put it in front of their house, or they'll go crazy, but you can put it in front of my house, that kind of conversation that we really typically don't have the ability to get that, that close and personal with. So it does have some benefits. But at the same time, it really limits the scope. And it also does not look at all at side effects and unintended consequences on other streets. It really is a block by block approach.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hanzak?
Thank you. Thanks, Darryl, for a really comprehensive presentation. Cover so many things. I'm just going to touch on one, one little, little issue that is kind of, covers many, many different domains, which is GIS capacity. I was really struck, I think it was one of the October meetings, by what an excellent job our committees had done. The Safe, Safe Streets Committee, I believe it was called, and the presentation that was done out on that. And I, if I recall correctly, that was one of the areas that they had highlighted as well. And it was my impression, and I may be wrong, that we don't have that capacity, at least that's what I think was said on staff. And, and yet, it, it seems crucial to addressing a more comprehensive approach to any of these issues. And I, and I also recall there was a tool, I think maybe that the county or the state had put together where you could now look at crash data. I haven't actually gone to the website yet. But it, it was really striking to me. And I thought, you know, there, there are, even my own son, who's 16, said, that's no big deal, you know? All the residents can just pop their data in there. I know the, the county stormwater group also had residents literally pop their data onto a map. So I guess, I'm just curious, have you guys looked into getting GIS capacity? Or do you have some actually available? And what are your thoughts on that? And how could we support, we can have a dialogue later on how we might support that as a council? Thanks.
Absolutely. We have extensive GIS capacity. It's primarily been focused on stormwater. So our entire stormwater system, as well as all our annual inspections, is all uploaded onto GIS. So all that data is available for us to use and for our analysis. What we don't have is a database that shows our, for instance, where our speed humps are across the city, where our sidewalks are across the city, where our stop signs are, you know? We don't, we don't have a GIS layer that has that level of detail. We have the, you know, we have the system in place. We just don't have the staff time or contractor dollars to allocate, to divet, to building that out. So that's, that's where that is. It can be identified as a funded, you know, funding item. I don't think it needs a position. I think it could be done with consulting time or contractual time. A lot of our GIS updates for stormwater are done through contract. It is a fairly defined and very specific set of skills to, you know, put that information in in a way that's, connects to everything else. One of the things that we are sorely needing in Public Works, and if I had a wish list, this would be at the top of every single one, is we have no work order system. We're doing everything manually. I mean, if I told you how we track work, he would, he would shudder a little bit. Thank God for Google Maps. We screenshot pictures, circle da, 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 give it to the staff to do. They say, done, give it back. You know, it's been a funding issue. So we sorely need a work order system that would allow us to collaborate. A lot of those work order systems are built on GIS platforms. So at that point, any improvement you make, your, your data gets added as it's, as it's being done. So that's, that's the direction we need to go. There's vehicles out there, we know about them. We haven't been able to, you know, have funding available to, you know, make that request, just due to tight budgets in the past. So we very sorely need a work order system on a GIS platform that could start to populate a lot of these layers that we need. That said, our planning office and, has done a ton of stuff with GIS, just phenomenal stuff with economic justice, community development, block grant funding, you know, areas, just all that stuff. There's tons of information on the city's website. But some of the very specifics of where the stop signs are, where the speed humps are, where the sidewalks are, we don't have those layers built.
So just to be clear, you don't have the database on that that obviously needs staff time to build it out, or some, some kind of time? But do you, it wasn't clear to me whether you have on staff people who are, find it very easy to work in GIS, to upload pieces of data on a women. I mean, is that something that even could be gained through training? It's not, actually, that kind of step, in my own humble experience, was, is not necessarily that hard to get even for existing staff if you had the layers, you know, built out already. Do you have that kind of people or expertise on, multiple people maybe on your staff?
Not really.
Okay. Thanks.
We do have a limited amount of people. One, one person in particular with GIS capacity, we just hired our construction manager who does have GIS background, so we'll probably be tapping into that. One of the challenges, of course, the person on our staff that currently has GIS technology, knowledge is our city engineer. He doesn't have time to sit in front of it and, and put database points on, on maps. So part of it is just time allocation, other priorities. Not a very deep staff, we're very thin, we're very lean. But that said, you know, when we can, for instance, our new construction manager not only has GIS background, he's also a certified arborist. So we got all kinds of internal collaboration that we're planning to do. But there'll be, you know, a priority list of where he's going to focus on that stuff first. But yeah, it's, it's, as David had mentioned in his, you know, the technology update and bringing ourselves into the 21st and 22nd century is, is an area where we are, are not, we, we don't, don't have it.
I had one quick question about CDGB funds. Is, is the entire city eligible for CDGB funds? Or if you go by street by street or zip code, generally speaking, what are the areas where CDGB funds are eligible to be used versus other ones?
Ward 5. Ward 5 and a tiny little bit of Ward 6. Very, very tiny little bit of Ward 6. And it's really changed over the past 20 years. Less and less of the city is CDBG eligible. And the CDBG requirements are incredibly stringent.
Yeah. Yeah, they will come back and get your money.
Councilmember DeBala?
And a point, a point along those lines there. There's wending its way through the federal and state bureaucracy. There's energy efficiency, CDBG money coming down the pike through one of the recent infrastructure bills. That, I am not clear whether it's only going to be for Ward 5 and 6 or whether it could be used citywide.
Yes, and I've learned that Montgomery County has an allocation as to Gaithersburg and Rockville, but not Tacoma Park. So I haven't figured out why yet.
Right, because it's either 30,000 or 35,000 cities of a certain size, under a certain size. The money goes first to MEA, Massachusetts Energy, sorry, you still live in Massachusetts, Maryland Energy Administration. And then it gets divvied up from there. And that's where it is now, as far as I know, unless somebody knows something more over the last few weeks. Okay. And we're waiting to see. But I raise it because it may be focused on Wards 5 and that little bit of 6, or it may be citywide. And in any case, it'll be very useful once we can get our hands on it.
Great. Well, I just want to thank the, the Public Works Department at large. I know we've spent a lot of time together over the years trying to tackle some pretty challenging things that were going on in Ward 6. And I think the, the biggest thing is making sure that we're able to be proactive in some places, especially as it pertains to our engagements with SHA, how we're using our District 20 delegation. Councilmember Hanzak brought up, a lot of phones going off today. Councilmember Hanzak brought up, a lot of phones going off today, mine's going off too, and I can't figure out how to make it stop dinging. Councilmember Hanzak brought up some of the data that we've received on crash data, pedestrian safety data. There are a number of places in our city that have high rates of accidents and pedestrian safety fatalities. And how can we work with S H A, using our District 20 delegation, to really target those places? And they span the city, I think is something that will be really important for us, to kind of use that data for the purpose of bringing attention to some of our pain points that we've been fully aware of for many years. I wasn't surprised at all. I was like, oh, yeah, University Boulevard, right near, yeah, yeah, that happens. But making sure that we're able to use that, that data as a way to really hone in on getting some of those infrastructure improvements on State Highway, I think is going to be really important. And so, right now, it is almost 11:00 P. M. And so, per hour requirements, we typically take a stop at 10 o'clock to confirm whether or not people are okay with continuing to move forward. I know, given that we have the Police Department up next, are, are people okay with us continuing to proceed? Or would you like for us to put the Police Department on the agenda for our next meeting?
I assure you, I can be very brief.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm going to come before you all anyway in March to provide the annual report, and that's going to provide a much more comprehensive overview of the Police Department. This is more of a kind of Reader's Digest version, and I will try to go through it quickly. Earlier today, I sent the entire council our annual report from last year. I will be presenting the 2022 annual report in March. And as I said, that gives a much more comprehensive overview of the Police Department.
Okay.
So I'll try to go through this quickly, if you have any questions at the end. Our overall FTE count is about 67 and a half, and it's broken down by the Office of the Chief, which is four time, four full-time components. I'm just going to go to the next slide because it breaks it down. So the Office of the Chief is myself, the Deputy Chief, and I want to welcome Deputy Chief Philopos, who's been sitting through this five-hour ordeal, I think it is now, or getting close to it. My commendant for doing that. It's myself, the Deputy Chief, the Executive Assistant, Kathy Plebey, who's also our Public Information Officer, and Ron Hardy, the Emergency Preparedness Manager. Our Criminal Investigation Section is 11 FTEs, and it's the Bureau Commander, who is a captain, the Division Commander, who's a lieutenant, and we have criminal investigators, our Victim Witness Coordinator, our Property and Evidence Coordinator, and our Crime Analyst, and our SAT team. Our SAT team is our undercover team. Operations is our main component. There are Patrol Officers, they're the ones that are going to show up on a call for service. There are 33 people in our Operations Division. That also includes three of our Safe Speed employees, and they are paid out of the Safe Speed Fund. The Sports Services Division is all of our support, which is our records, our communications, our logistics, parking permit, et cetera. And there are 12 FTEs in that particular section. All of you know this, community outreach is the cornerstone of what we do. All the members of the Police Department integrate community policing into their concept on a daily basis. It doesn't just come from me, it's every day, every officer doing that on an everyday basis. We have several projects and programs that you may be familiar with. I think one that's really important and we're taking applications for right now is our Community Academy. Several of the existing council members have gone through that Community Academy. We've also had staff members go through the Community Academy. It's a 12-week program that basically provides a comprehensive overview of the Police Department. I encourage any one of you, and I think Councilmember Vulture has already put in to, to join, to join that program, and also please citizens to do that. What that does is it wedges that gap between, you know, us and the, and the community, anyone that, that is skeptical about the Police Department. I highly encourage them to come to that, because you get an overview of what we do. We also have several programs, and I, and I won't go through them, because most of you know them. And we also have our Police Chief Advisory Board, which I think is really important. My goal when I came here as chief is to not assign people to Chiefs Advisory Boards that were rubber stamping the Police Department and thought the Police Department was fantastic. I reached out to the most skeptical people in the community, because I felt that was important, and they came up with some of the best ideas that we've had in the, from the Chiefs Advisory Boards. One of the examples was the Alternative Dispute Mediation, which is a process by which if a complaint comes in, it's not going through the regular process, it allows some mediation between the officer and the involved resident. You know our programs, Coffee with a Cop, Breakfast with Santa, and a bunch of other ones. I do just want to touch on special initiatives, and I may take just a little bit more time on this, because I think it's important. Reimagining Public Safety, everyone knows, we had a Reimagining Public Safety Task Force. We took that very seriously. We, I said at the beginning that I am committed to taking a holistic approach to public safety here in the city of Tacoma Park. Several recommendations were made, we've taken several steps to implement those recommendations. The council has had a session where they reviewed the recommendation, the Police, Police Chiefs Advisory Board reviewed the recommendations, and we've also implemented several of their recommendations. Some of them are moving code enforcement to HCD, eliminating the use of K-9 in the city of Tacoma Park, publishing traffic stop and arrest data, and having a Police Department with a guardian approach to law enforcement. I was pleased to say we were already doing that. We also have signed up for the 30 by 30 Initiative, which is an initiative and a goal to have law enforcement within the United States be represented by women, 30 percent. That's the goal. Right now, we're nationwide, it's about 13 percent. We are currently at about 15 percent, so we have some work to do. Just about our staffing in general, I am extremely proud of our, the diversity in our department. We speak seven different languages, and our Police Department is almost a direct reflection of the demographics of the city of Tacoma Park. Very, very proud of that, I think that's really important. One thing I also want to stress is, we're a really young department. I've been here five years, and 70 percent of our Police Department, both sworn and civilian, have been hired since I got here. And these people want to be here for the right reason, they want to be guardians, and they, I think that we are, we are, we are creating a legacy, because those people are going to be supervisors, those people are going to move on. The other thing that we talked about yesterday, so I won't get too, in too detail about it, is our Mental Health Counselors. I think that is extremely important, it's near and dear to me. A person that has mental health, people with mental health problems in my family, it touches me, and I cannot stress enough how important that program is. I just ran through a, this PowerPoint faster than I possibly could have.
Which you have tomorrow.
For the sake of time.
You're like, I'm not sending through another five-hour meeting.
Councilmember Small is already there, I'm not going to let it pass. Tomorrow night, we are having a Ward six Public Safety Meeting. There are three ways you can join this meeting. You can join this meeting in person, or you can join this meeting via the webinar, via Zoom, and sign up for that. You also, if you can't join via one of those two ways, you can send questions in advance, and we've already seen multiple questions. We will attempt to answer every one of those questions. If we do, are not able to answer the questions tomorrow night, I personally will email back anyone that sends in any questions. So I also want to encourage any other, any other person, resident from any other ward to come out as well. A lot of the things that happened in Ward six also happened in Ward two and Ward three and et cetera. I know we're having some one-off meetings, next week we're going to have a meeting at the Essex House. There's a desire to have a meeting on Woodlawn and Sycamore, and we're going to do that. But I think, I really want to encourage people to come out tomorrow night, although it says Ward six, it's for the entire city. With that, I will open it up to questions.
And really quickly, Chief.
Yes.
In the past, with these types of meetings, the Zooms are typically recorded, and the information is often shared after the fact. Is that going to be the same as to what will happen right now?
Absolutely. At any meeting we have now, we, with the technology, we, we want, we record it, and it's available for anyone to go back and watch. So if you can't join, and you can't submit questions because you're out of town, it'll be on our website, it'll be on the city website, and people will be able to go back and watch it.
Perfect. Councilmember Seaman.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation tonight, especially the length of it.
I can do brief when brief needs to be done, I understand the time delay.
I just want to tell you once again how happy I am, how pleased I am, that you have changed, you are changing the culture of our Police Department to more closely match the character of our progressive city. And I really appreciate the work you've put into that, and I, I know you still have plans for additional changes that are going to continue to move us in that direction. But it's not just you that I want to thank, I want to thank all the members of your staff, because they really have grown in leaps and bounds since you got here.
Councilmember Seaman, I appreciate that, and I'm glad that you mentioned it. It is, it is the staff day-to-day. I am not the person that, that responds to the call for service, I'm not the person that's at the community meeting. It's the people that we've hired. And I said earlier, my quantity, my, my policy went for hiring when I was hired here, and I said it the first day, is quality, not quantity. I want quality people, I'd rather work with less people, and if, if we don't have quality people. So I'm very, very pleased with our staff, I say kudos to them all the time. I think we have a phenomenal staff, and, and like I said, I think we, as I said earlier, we're building a legacy, because those people are going to be supervisors, and then those people are going to be command staff, and so on and so forth. When I leave here, somebody's going to be the chief, probably the guy behind me, but that's.
Okay, so reading between the lines, how many vacancies do you have?
Right now, we are one of the only few police departments in the country, in this region, that's almost fully staffed. So if we were able to hire, we'd be fully staffed. We have, we have 41, 41 officers out of 43, and we have two officer, two offers, two officers, it's late, that we can make offers to right now. So if the hiring freeze was, was, was lifted, we could make offers to those two officers right now.
Yeah, I, I would lift it if I had the magic wand, but I don't.
Do you want to make a motion? But, but other than that, so we, we have, we have, we have four vacancies, and two of the vacancies are crossing guards, and two of the vacancies are police officers. But other than that, we're fully staffed across the board. As I said, when I first got here, I think we were down 12 officers.
Thank you to the suggestion of my colleague. I would like to make a motion that this council direct the chief to go ahead, and, not the chief, but I guess the city manager, to go ahead and fill those vacancies.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor to have the city manager, to direct the city manager to lift the hiring freeze for the Police Department. Comments, questions? Yes.
Comments, questions? So while I support the concept, I feel like we just asked for a full list, and in a few days, we will have the full list, because we asked for it within a week, and that this might be a topic we come to next week. And I might vote yes, but I think it's only fair to say what else is out there that is on hold.
I would.
Sorry about that, guys.
I would be willing to table this until we get that list.
Okay. All right. Well, that was you see, do I get to, do I get, were you finished?
Oh, no, I was just, I saw, Councilmember Gibson has a light.
Oh, I was just going to say that this department is the biggest department in the city, the budgetary implications are significant. I am not well-versed enough in our budget and that to, to, to support taking away a freeze or hiring anybody, frankly. So I would resist moving too fast on this. I appreciate it, I want to go to bed too, but we, I need to come back and understand not only what you do, but the budgetary implications of that. So.
Great, thank you so much.
Before you do that, before I, I had my light on before we got off on this part.
Sure, sure, sure. I just wanted to address Councilmember Gibson's point. Next Wednesday, January the 18th, we will receive a presentation from the city manager on the fiscal health of the city, and that should align with the due date, so we will have the vacancy data that we requested on Monday before that meeting, and we will receive a presentation from the city manager on Wednesday in terms of the fiscal health of the city. Just as a reminder.
Mayor, point of order, could we ensure that we were going to have whatever documents are going to be discussed at that presentation in advance?
Yeah. Gosh.
Yes, I will make sure that that happens. If we need to do a vote now to direct the city manager to provide those materials, would someone like to make that motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All those in favor of having the presentation for Wednesday, the 18th Fiscal Health of the City, by?
Monday.
Monday. I want to make sure I have the dates.
Monday's a holiday.
Monday's a holiday?
Am I kidding?
Friday.
By Friday.
I guess so.
Yep. It's either Friday or Tuesday, which would, may not give us a full 24 hours to review. All right. By Fri, close of business Friday, the 13th. All those in favor of directing the city manager to have the presentation that will be on the fiscal health of the city by Friday, the 13th, C O B, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I should say aye as well. Any abstaining? Okay. So the motion carries for the city manager to provide the presentation on the fiscal health of the materials for the fiscal health of the city presentation by C O B, Friday, the 13th. All right, thank you so much. Back to our regularly scheduled discussion. Councilmember DeBala.
Thank you. What he said, thank you for all you've done, and particularly for the staff of the Police Department. To those of us who are long-term residents, have, many of us have noticed this, noticed the change and appreciate the change. That said, I, I, another thing I was wondering about was when we might return to, this might be a mayor question, return to the topic of, of the reimagining public safety recommendations? When might we have a work session to come back to those, those items? Many of them have been implemented, absolutely, and there's still some outstanding that we were going to discuss with the new council, and at some point, we need to do that.
Yes, I don't have a tentative date just yet, but that is a placeholder item that we have in the long list with a goal of making it through our budget, and then having a presentation after that fact.
All right, so that, that gives me.
But it is on the list, but we have time.
And Mayor, Councilwoman DeBala, and for residents that are up this late, which I don't know how many, we are currently still working on those, so it's not like everything has stopped because the council is not having a work session. A lot of those take action items and take review, like the Mental Health Counselors was one of them, Moving HCD was done. So there's a lot of things that we're working on doing, so I don't want the public to think just because the council isn't necessarily meeting, that the direction wasn't given the last time we met, and we're not taking action to actually implement the ones that we can, or review other ones.
Thank you for following up on that, that's where I was trying to go.
Councilmember DeBala, really quickly on that point, I also want to remind everyone that the Public Safety Task Force recommendations were not limited to the Police Department. There were additional recommendations that would be on the Police Department, which included increasing scholarships, the Direct Department, and things of that nature. So just want to remind folks that there were other recommendations that relate to other departments in the community that have also been implemented.
Thanks.
And if I can just add also, other departments within the city, you know, the, the Media Office and other, other offices have taken effort, are taking measures to implement some of the recommendations as well. So it's not just the Police Department. Like I said, it's a holistic view on, on what we're doing here, because it's not just us, it's everyone to make that difference.
Yes, and one reason that the Code Enforcement Crew was switched to Housing was part of, because that was part of the recommendation.
That was, that was an integral part, that was a recommendation made by the, the Public Safety Task Force, although we were already kind of discussing doing that, that kind of pushed that, as well as K-9.
Yeah. I know that you sent us the 21 report, and you're about to do the 22 report. Has there been, last question, has there been any thought, and this is a question from a resident, has there been any thought to, and is there any point in comparative data, us and Rockville, us and Gaithersburg, in terms of crime stats, or, or, or case resolution stats, or some of the other numbers that you have been collecting? So you've been trending over time for Tacoma, and that's great, and very helpful, you know, showing us trends that way, but is there any benefit to trying to do comparative?
Well, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. We are the only full-service law enforcement agency other than Montgomery County in the county. We do everything. Rockville and Gaithersburg do not. A lot of their police operations are supplemented by Montgomery County Police.
Right, right.
So there's benefits in, in looking at analysis for, for like, like agencies. However, I do not see them necessarily as much like agencies. Like Hyattsville would be more of a comparable for size, scope, demographics, geography, et cetera, than say, Rockville or Gaithersburg. But we always look at comparable data. So when we. So when we did our traffic and arrest data, we looked at other jurisdictions to see if what we were doing was different. It clearly was, because if you look at our data over five years, our arrests dropped by over 200 percent, and our traffic stops the same, but the crime was not reduced, it was just quality enforcement. So a lot of departments have looked to us as a template for solving or changing what they're doing. So yes, there's always value in looking at other jurisdictions, but you just have to make sure that what you're looking at is, has value.
Apples-to-apples and not apples-to-grapefruit, yeah.
Correct.
Do you want to make those recommendations, that we go ahead and get some of that?
We, no, I actually wasn't going to, but we could. We could ask if it is possible for you to, when you report in March, to say a little bit about, for example, Hyattsville and how.
I will tell you, the squeeze is not worth the juice. I mean, I'm being very honest here, I would rather focus on what our problems are here in Tacoma Park, and you hear a lot more of that in March. That's where my focus is. Yes, there may be value, but there's more value right now in focusing on the serious crime that's occurring here.
Yes.
And we're having it. So if we were utilizing my time and my staff's time correctly or efficiently, it would much be, it would be more geared towards analyzing our data and figuring out how to solve our problems than trying to compare it to someone else's. It's just my candid response.
Mayor, okay, that works for me. Thank you, thank you for all you do.
Councilmember Honzak?
I just want to add on to that point, and I don't want to put any pressure on your department, but I do think there could be some value in a few limited, big-picture statements that you are able to make very readily, probably because you are familiar with the data from other comparable cities with comparable departments, and I don't just mean Hyattsville, like across the nation, this is the trend. And the reason I say that right now is, you know, we're getting into budget season, there have been a lot of questions among residents about, are we going to need to cut things? And as much as, you know, our Police Department is very much beloved by Tacoma Park residents, I think it will really arm us with the kind of information that we will need to talk about, for example, the size of the police force and the quality that we are getting that goes a little bit beyond with some data points. I think that would be really terrific, like the statement you just made about, you know, the sort of the quality issues versus the quantity, but then being able to make those comparable statements to other, I would say, other cities, for example, that are dealing with, like sanctuary cities, progressive politics cities, that are also similar demographically and have their own police force, those kinds of statements. I've even gone out looking for that kind of data myself, but that's not really the best way for us to do that, right? Because you could give us better information than we're going to gather on our.
For background, when we did the deep data dive for the five years, there were comparable cities in that. So I'll forward that to all of you, that may answer all of your questions, because we already, that was already done. I didn't, maybe I misunderstood what you were asking for, I thought you were talking about a real-time comparison now, but that data was put into that, that information that we provided. So I'll, again, forward those links, and that may answer your questions.
Yeah, that'll do it, thank you.
Councilmember Gibson?
I just wanted to encourage and agree that I think arming ourselves for the budgetary battles ahead of time is worth doing. And so however it can be pulled together by you, for us to use the better.
Well, first, I want to thank the chief for all of the work that you and your wonderful officers have been doing to not only focus on protecting our community, but educating our community, and being an integral component of connecting with the people in our community. The Coffee with a Cop, the Lunch with Santa, all of that stuff is just so important to, particularly for children of color in our community, so that they learn to not fear the police, and that they are able to engage with you all in a meaningful way, and I appreciate you taking that next step to really focus on community policing, because we wouldn't necessarily get that with other police departments. So, I don't see any other lights, which is awesome. So with that, I'm going to, this time I'm using some force, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.